All right, we will call to order the April eighteenth meeting of the Planning Commission. If we can start with roll call, please.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Pepsner.
Here.
Commissioner Moran.
Here.
Commissioner Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Yu. Chair, we have quorum to start the meeting.
Great, thank you. Next up, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes from April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Does anybody have any edits, deletions, or additions that they'd like to propose?
No.
They do not.
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? One abstention, motion carries. Next up is the City Council report. We will skip over that for now. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. And just a reminder that a public hearing on Alverno Heights Academy is for the school master plan only. It is not for the Villa CUP. And so if you have any comments about the Villa CUP, now is the time to make them, because it will only be about the agendized item later. Seeing no comments, we will move on to our first item of business, the annual review of the conditional use permit, two thousand and one hundred and three, for Alverno Heights Academy's two thousand and twenty-one master plan update, and a request for extension to Planning and Community Preservation Department Condition Number Twelve for modular buildings. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, Chair. I have a brief presentation for you this evening regarding the annual review for the campus master plan for Alverno Heights Academy. First, I have one slide regarding the background for the commissioners that wasn't part of the CUP approval process. And then we'll go into the summary of provision of the conditional use permit. And then the annual review will be more or less like a performance review for the CUP to see if those conditions has been met or not. And lastly, we'll review Alverno's request to amend the conditional use permit. The master plan update for Alverno Heights Academy came before the Planning Commission in two thousand and twenty-one. The Planning Commission hold five public hearings and approve the conditional use permit on December first, two thousand and twenty-two. Following that, on December fourteenth, appeal of Planning Commission's decision was filed with the City Council. And on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council conducted a de novo hearing and continued the hearing for another four additional meetings and approved the master plan update and mitigated negative declaration on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Oh, two thousand and twenty-three, I'm sorry. That's a typo. And for that resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash thirteen, I would like to point out there is one non-substantive typographic error that was made on the resolution of the City Council Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirteen regarding the reference to the CUP number. So the Alverno Master Plan CUP number is two thousand and one dash zero three. And the Planning Commission resolution was two thousand and one dash nineteen. It was used interchangeably, so you might get confused on the CUP number. It should be two thousand and one dash oh three. We usually don't have that many conditional use permits. It doesn't go up to number nineteen. And then lastly, I would like to mention that all the mitigation measures from the previous approved CUP will remain in effect. So here's a table of summary for the provisions that conditional use permit has. It gives a brief summaries that stated the CR modular municipal code for the conditional use permit is still in effect in regards to violations to the CUP or revocation to the CUP. The adopted conditional use permit, two thousand and two dash oh three, which is the Villa CUP, governs the filming and photography activities. Annual review is required for the Planning Commission to conduct. And also, the maximum student body capacity is capped at four hundred enrollment. And also on the second column, it stated that any new buildings that anticipated in the campus master plan are required to provide mitigation measures as is stated in the approved CUP, design review process, historical preservation, seismic safety, parking, building safety, public works requirement, police and fire provisions are all in place and will remain required. So the next two slides are about the performance review. Alverno is required to conduct a neighborhood meeting. So on January twenty-fifth, Alverno holds the meeting in the campus and provided the neighbors' staff with updates to their plan. So Alverno staff, city staff, city manager, police chief, planning staff, along with nine other residents attended the meeting. Alverno started out by receiving comments on the new drop-off pickup plan. They talk about parking and traffic, also noise, and the use of the Michelinda parking lot. Alverno also presented the rendering of the future sports court located at the west side of the Villa Row. The meeting minutes included in the staff report as attachment E. We also received some updates from Alverno that their enrollment currently is at two hundred and sixty-five. Also, we receive a police call log. Sixty-four calls were related to Alverno, of which seven are related to noise issue. Next, we have six conditions that have time performance restriction on them. The first one being the facing plan, which is the sports court. It said, it stated in our condition that the courts shall be completed within fifteen months. And Alverno has expressed that they are ready, the construction drawings are ready to be submit, so they will be submit within the timeline.
I'm sorry, when we talk about fifteen months, is that from the, from which approval did that start the clock?
So that will be from the approval of the conditional use permit by the City Council. So that would be the May ninth.
May ninth.
Twenty-three.
Okay, so we're at eleven months.
Correct. Next will be the traffic flow. On the conditions is stated that after the end of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, the new plan for drop-off and pickup will be in place. And at the last neighborhood meeting, we were told that the new plan was very effective. It resulted in less traffic and less queuing. Next would be the Michelinda parking lot. It stated that there will be no further use after fifteen months for activities. It will be used for parking only after July or August this year. The next one with the timeline is the modular building. The modular building shall be removed within fifteen months. And staff also received a water leak report in last year, July seventh, that Alverno has conducted a water audit report confirming compliance with the stipulated conditions. And the staff want to recommend that Alverno replace existing toilets that use over five gallons of water. And when any leak occurred, they would repair the leak in a timely manner. Lastly, Alverno has provide a letter of explanation that the use of field was by La Salle Preparatory School, and it was offered without charge. So the reason why we're having this public hearing instead of a discussion is because Alverno Heights Academy submitted a request letter seeking an extension of time for their modular buildings. A ten-year extension for the use of existing modular building classroom would enable them with the flexibility for academic program growth and adjustment. The request may be granted at the Planning Commission's discretion. So alternative before the Planning Commission this evening is to hold the annual review for the conditional use permit related to the Alverno master plan update and grant the proposed amendment or conduct the annual review and deny the request or continue the review and provide directions to the applicant and staff. That concludes my presentation. And Alverno also have a presentation for the Planning Commission.
Okay, are there questions for staff before we hear from Alverno? No, okay.
Good evening. Thank you for your time in reviewing the conditional use permit and the master plan for Alverno Heights Academy. I'm Ken Farthing, the Chair of the Board of Trustees, and this is Joanne Herobedian, who is our head of school. We have a joint presentation on the school's efforts to implement the master plan. Now, I'm sure the Commission's aware during the last year there's been significant changes and improvements with the closing of the high school and the repurposing of the campus for the lower school. Our students, parents, faculty, and staff have worked very hard to continue the successes of the lower school. And we believe that the school continues to be an asset to not only our school community at large, but also to the CRModra community at large. Now, in terms of our outline, we'll provide an update on the sports court, traffic around the school, review the general noise conditions, and special conditions regulated the use of the Michelinda parking lot. Also, we'll talk about the neighborhood meeting and the repurposing of the campus and our request and rationale for the request for the ten-year time limit on the modular classrooms. This is a rendering of the sports courts. We're pleased to report that the school is moving forward with the construction of the sports courts. Eighty percent of our students participate in CYO sports programs, so it's really needed. We'll be submitting for design review next week. And as soon as we have approval of design review, we'll move into a plan check on our construction plans. We're targeting construction this summer when there's less activity on campus. And the goal is to have at least one of our new sports courts available by September. In any event, the athletic uses in the Michelinda lot would cease in August as required by City Council Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirteen. Now, with the closing of the high school, the school was able to implement significant improvements in the drop-off and pickup of our students as approved in the master plan. The middle school students now use the Wilson parking lot for drop-off and pickup. And our younger students, they use the Michelinda lot. And both lots, the use of, using both lots has really reduced the vehicle lines on both streets, Wilson and Michelinda. They're not entirely gone, but it's made them a lot shorter and move a lot faster. Okay. Yeah, move, there we go. These are the general noise and Michelinda lot restrictions. You can see there's quite a few there. I'm not going to go through all of them, but there's some campus-wide noise requirements. And then there's specific reduction measures for the Michelinda parking lot. Now, a number of these went into effect immediately, which we've implemented. Good example is recesses in lunchtimes have been staggered. We've moved lunches over to the cafeteria, things like that. Some activities are allowed to continue until the end of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then there are activities that are going to end in July. And those are primarily our athletic events, the practices and games in a Michelinda lot. As staff indicated, we did conduct a neighborhood meeting in January twenty-fifth. We wanted to wait at least six months until the high school had closed and the new lower school was operational. And we wanted to do this in order to better understand if there were any impacts we could address. There's a bit of growing pain, obviously, as you move forward with a new venture. We wanted to thank the neighbors and city staff for attending the meeting. Just so you're aware, we mailed out letters to all the property owners within three hundred feet of the twelve-acre campus. That's over a hundred and ninety property owners that got notice. And we had nine neighbors attend the meeting. And you have attached the meeting agenda and notes. And we're happy to talk about those in more detail. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joanne and let her walk through the rest of the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Beginning in spring of two thousand and twenty-three with the closure of the high school, we moved the students from the modulators up to the main campus. And the move was quite extensive with a lot of parent volunteers and, of course, all the teachers and staff lending a hand. We are currently able to satisfy the needs of our enrollment of two hundred and sixty-five students. It takes a lot of rotation and a lot of creative movement for us to satisfy all of our curricular and co-curricular programming. The reason why we're here tonight asking for a ten-year extension on the modulators is because with the move, we did not equip the modulators for instruction because we were told that we were going to have to move them out. So rather than put out expense that may not be of value, we've moved all the students up to the current campus. Now, that being said, like I said, it satisfies the needs somewhat for the two hundred and sixty-five, but we have a lot of requests for enrollment. And for us to move toward four hundred, and I don't mean in one year, we would need those additional classrooms for multiple instructional and co-curricular programs. I can list them for you, but these photos indicate that those classrooms are full, that in the smaller learning situations, as you'll see, it really is an advantage. For instance, these young children are doing coding at a very young age, and they have the ability to have the space to really fully complete the coding and the project without being obstructed. Whereas in the previous photos, you'll see that, you know, the space is tight. Our computer lab, we've outgrown very quickly with AI now in the future. We see that two computer labs will be necessary, along with a full robotics room, sports rooms, and I could, a language lab, a learning specialist lab, and a school counselor who we move around, our student government, and mock trial robotics and so on. I could go into detail, but I'm trying to give you an overview that we have a very robust and twenty-first century plan for our students. And with that extra space, we will fulfill that. I want you to note that the modulators are really quite complementary to the thirteen point two acres at Alverno. You can see that we were very thoughtful in the vegetation and the landscaping so that they blended in well with the beautiful villa and also with the nineteen-sixties style of the main campus. Again, I won't read this slide for you because I know you can read well. But these, in summary, we feel that the extension for the modulators would benefit the school and community at large for many reasons. The demand for increased enrollment is consistent throughout the year. It's not seasonal. It starts, it doesn't start and it doesn't end. We are continuously having requests for tours. We're very forthcoming, saying that we have a waitlist. But we certainly invite people to visit the campus and hear of all the wonderful opportunities that we offer to the students. The council tonight, we're asking to please consider this extension as a compliment to the community as well. As you see, for sixty-four years, Alverno Heights Academy has been a very vibrant part of the community. And these are just a few of the organizations within the city that we support or are members of. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be very happy to answer them for you.
Questions?
Just one, are you using the modulators at all with the two hundred and sixty-five kids?
Currently, we are not using the modulators regularly. We will use it as a swing space in the event that, let's say, a reading group or a learning group needs to have a space. But no, we have not designated a space yet, although we have a great need for it. So what, unfortunately, what we're doing now, or unfortunately for the teachers, for instance, our one science lab is functioning as a science lab, a language lab, and a mathematics room. So we're rotating a lot. What we'd like to have is a stationary robotics room so that the projects can, you know, be completed without all that movement and storage. Like, and I mentioned the other co-curriculars and curriculars.
Okay, so as, if you expand your population, you don't necessarily need a classroom space, but you might need it for other educational permanent locations.
We'll need both. We'll need both. We'll need additional classroom space because our traditional structure is that everyone has a homeroom that they start the day in. And then they break out, whether it's to the art studio, science, or math. Everybody has math at the same time because we have a very unique system of instruction where all students in fifth through eighth grade go to mathematics at the same time so that they can be placed in the appropriate level of math. It's not grade level, it's really capability level. And it's turned out to be very successful. So currently, most of our junior high students are taking high school math.
And the classrooms you're using now are fully occupied?
Fully occupied.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we, we're always rotating. So we actually use Google, a Google Doc to, you know, like an appointment calendar to book certain Makerspace, for instance, or the LTC, which is also the Learning Technology Center, the computer lab, so that we can be certain that everybody has the opportunity to use it. The younger, the younger students, TK through five, use our secondary science lab as a gardening center, as a robotics room, and as their science lab. So again, we're always rotating, storing, rotating, and storing, rotating.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning this particular agendized item. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Who do we have first?
Daniel Threadgill, ECR Modra Boulevard. Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of La Salle College Preparatory. We currently lease the softball field at Alverno Heights since we do not house softball or baseball on campus. La Salle College Preparatory is proud to educate the students from this community. Currently, we have two hundred and forty-seven students at our school from the St. Rita's, Alverno Heights Academy, Gooden School, and CRModra Middle School, which is about thirty-six percent of our student body come from this community. So we have a great working relationship with them, and we're looking to continually maintain it. We're committed to building whatever positive collaborative manner that we need. Especially since, like I said, over a third of our families come from the community, which this council represents. Thank you.
You said you're leasing the property, or aren't they just letting you use it?
They're letting us use it, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, yes. Just letting us use it, it's just an understanding. I apologize.
So they provide the insurance coverage to, for liability. But yeah, it's not a lease that we allow them to use it, but they take the liability.
Okay, that's fine.
We take, yeah, all the liability, all the maintenance, all that kind of stuff falls on us. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
James George, San Gabriel Court.
Good morning. My name is James George, and as you mentioned, I live on San Gabriel Court. I'm the father of two children that attend Alverno Heights Academy, and I'm currently the president of our Parent Teacher Association. One thing I just want you guys all to take into consideration is that we are, what we're looking at right now, it's the lower school has taken over the entire campus. So we are kind of in a new phase, as Ken mentioned, where there's things that we're learning about this campus, and the ability for us to utilize that campus to its fullest extent is really what we're asking for you to really keep, consider and take to heart because our children deserve it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Joanne Heribedian. Running Bear Bunch, Betty Hill Avenue.
Hi there, my name's Running Bear, I know some of you. I grew up here in Sierra Madre, I've got two kids at Alverno, one in eighth grade, my gorgeous daughter and my handsome son, yeah, very talented man in fourth grade. Any rate, tonight we've heard flexibility mentioned a few times, and I will say that having gone through in-home schooling with a teacher-wife in one room and then the kids each in their own room and me trying to work in another room, that was an experience where I really got to see them at work. But now, you know, four years on, one thing that I'm definitely seeing is that the socialization of kids on the playground, in the classroom, et cetera, the one thing they're benefiting from is space and flexibility. In fact, I was just on campus for something this week, and I ran into the eighth-grade teacher and said hello, and then I turned around and I ran into the seventh-grade teacher, and she was out of her classroom looking for a place to take her class because they just kind of had enough of the room. They're doing great, but, and they're certainly not necessarily on top of each other, but sometimes these students right now just need a different space. And so Alverno has that flexibility, and with those modulators being something that we can rely on and be able to build out for a decade, that adds a lot of flexibility, not only for the students but also for the teachers who are changing their pedagogy sometimes on a morning-to-afternoon basis. So I would like to take that into consideration, and, you know, the modulators, in my opinion as a parent, they look great. My kid, my son was a third-grade student in them, and if we can turn them into something a little more permanent on a temporary basis, then I think they really will benefit students across our campus. Thank you.
Jennifer Siders, East Grandview Avenue.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Torres Siders, I live on East Grandview Avenue in Sierra Madre, and I have two daughters who attend Alverno, one who will cross the street and head over to LaSalle next year. So I'm here as both a resident and as a parent to speak in support of Alverno's conditional use permit, including the proposed amendment. My husband and I count ourselves incredibly fortunate to be able to send our children to a school where they are learning what it means to live as active and engaged members of community. It is a joy to see Alverno's students take walking field trips to the library and to the fire station. Next week, my daughters will be at the Playhouse rehearsing for their spring musical. All of these experiences help them know value and feel connected to this special city. Just as importantly, our daughters are learning that to be part of a community means to steward and share one's resources for the common good, the way Alverno preserves and protects the historic villa, for example, and makes its open spaces available for use by other local organizations that serve children and families. Of course, community also means collaboration and compromise. To that end, I would respectfully ask you to consider the steps Alverno has taken, among other measures, by implementing a new pickup and drop-off plan to reduce traffic and by limiting students' use of the campus such that the sounds of children eating lunch and playing at recess do not disturb our neighbors. As a resident and as a parent, I believe very strongly that a thriving school is an asset whose value is difficult to overstate. I have lived in other communities and have seen the alternative firsthand. Neglected spaces and shuttered schools mean blight and worse. At a time of much concern over the loss of third places, those sites outside of work and home where neighbors come together and community is built, how lucky we are to have a campus that fosters active engagement among young people and the adults who support them. Alverno has put forth a plan that will help the school thrive for years to come. A successful Alverno contributes to a successful Sierra Madre. As someone who, I'm sure like all of you, is deeply invested in the future of both, I hope you will grant the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Stevens, West Grandview Avenue.
Keith Stevens, West Grandview. In two thousand and seven, Alberto proposed an expanded grass sport field and multipurpose gym building. At the time, the existing field was too small for regular sports. The softball field was worn and the backstop fencing outdated, but was used by Alverno in the Sierra Madre Girls Softball League. The new grass field would accommodate regulation field sports and other activities and contain an improved softball, diamond, and fencing. Alverno noted repeatedly for years that the field would be open to the public to enjoy as a community benefit. Commission and neighbors expressed concern about the use of the field not related to Alverno. The girls league was grandfathered in without objection. The commission agreed with neighbors that they did not want to allow consistent and long-term use of the field by any others. Renting to AYSO was the most likely action at the time and was specifically mentioned. Alverno said they must have the ability to share the field with related schools on occasion. Sharing the field was for unexpected and temporary conditions. The field was built and opened. It was closed to the public within months and has remained so. That public benefit was replaced with Alverno's unilateral, never-before-discussed decision to give LaSalle High School free regular use of the softball field. The multipurpose building was to offer a weatherproof venue for regulation basketball and volleyball. It was touted as necessary for the students in making Alverno a school of choice. The neighbors applauded this proposal as noise from sports would be contained. Since the two thousand and seven proposal, all flat courts have been eliminated while the number of league teams has doubled. The building is still in the plans, but the space is now occupied by temporary white box rooms in stark contrast to the historic and iconic villa. Over ten meetings, surveys, over ten years of meetings, surveys, studies, deliberations, added conditions, and the outcome of these proposals is far from the original intent. We feel deceived that we have had enough of Alverno's perpetually temporary state. Alverno must adapt their existing permanent buildings to fit their chosen student body mix, spend limited funds on permanent improvements in the master plan. We feel the institution has overstepped their boundaries of tolerance with the end-to-end ongoing use of this property seven days a week. Thank you.
Lisa Puleo, West Highland Avenue.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Puleo, and I live at six seventy-two West Highlands. I wasn't gonna come here, come to this meeting tonight, but I left my gardening and rushed over because the LaSalle girls softball team is still on the field right now, and they are using Alverno's hoses to spray one another, and they're screaming. This isn't sports to me, and there's no supervision because they're here. Secondly, I work from my home office, and today at three-thirty, I had a client, and she said, wow, are you at the Dodger game? So after my meeting, I walked outside, and I took a recording of the game. I don't know if you can hear this, hold on. That's all you need to hear. It's so loud, and it's, it's not the Alverno kids. And while I was out there, the after-school kids, this was at about four-ten, and I have a video of it, the after-school kids were on the sidewalk outside of the property on the corner of Highland and Wilson, and they were running really races because they couldn't play on their own field. That's just sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen Thomas, Wilson Street.
Hi, I know you guys have worked really hard on this, and I appreciate it, and I'm honestly so sick of coming to these meetings, as I'm sure you're tired of hearing it, too. But the only honest thing I heard tonight was from LaSalle, and I honestly believe that they are leasing that field. We have tour buses blocking Wilson all the time. I said, I took pictures of it double parked on Grandview, you could barely squeeze by. The line, all of this is lies. The line has not gotten better on Wilson Street. Pickup starts is supposed to be pickup at two forty-five most days. The line starts on Wilson at about quarter to, quarter to two. So some days it's an hour long, people are parked in the street going southbound, northbound is barely accessible, we can't even get out of our driveway half those times, so we just avoid those times. The parking has not gotten any better. I really wish that you guys would consider a red on Wilson, on the Alverno side, on the west side. It's just, it's none of, none of this is true. All of it is lies, and I have backup of videos and pictures of all of this, and it's consistent. It just, it's sad that we have to deal with this as neighbors and be at these meetings, and you guys can have other things could be on your plate. So I appreciate you listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to comment at this time?
Can I clarify a few things?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, then we'll bring it back for deliberation of the commission. I did have a question for, for staff. What does the CUP state about the use of the field? While you're working on that, I'm sorry.
The renting condition? So that's Community Services Department, condition number three. It states prohibit renting the soccer slash softball field to sports groups not associated with Alverno Heights Academy, such as American Youth Soccer Organization or for adult soccer.
So...
Well, you think your next question, can I ask one?
Yeah.
The drop-off situation, it's only gonna be changed at what, I mean, what jurisdiction do we have over changing the process that they have now, other than the change they're proposing in, I think in several months when they get different parking? Nothing? I mean, is that, that's part of this, there's nothing specific about making piecemeal changes to the drop-off process?
So we have a condition number eight under building, sorry, Public Works Department, condition number eight is for traffic flow? It states after the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three academic school year, drop-off and pickup of TK to fifth grade is through Michelinda Gate, and drop-off and pickup of sixth to eighth grade is through Wilson Gate. And...
Go ahead.
So Planning Commission does have the power to revoke the permit, so it stands to reason that Planning Commission also has the power to modify the permit, so...
Okay.
But we will have to agendize for another meeting. If you'd like to modify or revoke another condition besides condition number, planning condition number twelve, which is the modular buildings.
Okay, that's, that's my question, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess as drafted, renting has a pretty clear definition of there being some exchange for it, right?
Yes.
But clearly, the use today is by a group not associated with Alverno Heights Academy.
Is field maintenance and insurance a form of payment?
I, renting, do we have a definition of renting in the municipal code? We'll look through the municipal code for a definition.
Okay. Any other questions before we start deliberation?
Well, just as that pertains to that, because Sierra Madre, a girl softball was allowed to use the field, so I would imagine the same conditions for, if it's being used, if they're letting them use the field, they would have the same insurance issues that LaSalle would have, correct?
Well, as it's written, they can't use the field.
Oh, I thought they can.
No, it says very clearly prohibiting the renting.
No, no, not renting it, if they let them use it. It was my understanding years ago, we left it open.
Oh, girl softball, okay.
That was my, that was one of my suggestions because they were letting them use it before as one of the residents brought up, so I'm just saying, if that organization was allowed to use it without renting it, just had the ability to use it at some point, they weren't paying for it, but they would have the same insurance issues that LaSalle would have in terms of insuring if anybody got injured, they would cover them versus the school.
I assume that's right, that anybody using the field would have to have insurance for the use, but you can ask Alverno how that works for them.
Okay.
I will clarify that we do not rent the field to anyone. We have several requests often for rental. We do allow use of the field by any community group, such as girls softball, LaSalle High School, and the requirement is that they provide their own liability coverage and maintain it or repair as needed, but we do not have any type of contractual lease, rental agreement at all. So that is, you know, the clarification. And secondly, recreationally, for the neighbors in the community, the campus is open on the weekends for the...
That's never been the case. I, I, I can vouch that that's not at all the case.
We have several neighbors that do use our campus. We don't use, we don't open it as a park, but we don't turn our neighbors away. If we're there on site and the gates are open, we're there, they're most welcome to come in. We've had people that conduct yoga in the prayer garden, or the neighbors who bring their kids over to ride their bikes, et cetera, so we certainly don't turn people away, but on the other hand, we haven't opened it as, as you know, a community park, of course, so.
All right. Who would like to start?
I'll start just generically. I mean, I consider the limited decision we're committed to making here, I can make most of the findings. I understand there's intense acrimony that is more than just the school itself, but I don't see the modulators going away. I think their use sounds reasonable. I don't like the way they look. I wish they, Elon Musk had, you know, answered my phone call to come to the rescue and financed the building of their master plan because I thought they were great buildings and fantastic, but in the short run, I don't think they have many options, and they, it sounds like they certainly use, could use them. So I can make those findings. The other modifications, if someone wants to agendize them in terms of traffic flow and things, sound like... The other modifications, if someone wants to agendize them in terms of traffic flow and things, sound like real issues, but doesn't sound like it's within our purview, other than just to agendize revoking it or modifying it, which is fine with me, but for tonight, I think I can make the findings other than modifying, agendizing a separate issue to modify some other conditions that are not on our agenda for tonight.
Anybody else?
So we have 10 years and 15 months, so 11, over 11 years doesn't seem very temporary to me. I realize that they're there for a reason. They don't fit many of the codes of a permanent building that would be built today, as of fire sprinklers, et cetera. Do they have sprinklers? No? I'm wrong there? Thanks for letting me know. It doesn't seem very, they're not great to look at. And again, 11 years doesn't seem very temporary to me, but I'm also not raising the funds to build a new building. I don't think, I think I'd be okay to extend it for much less period of time than 10 years, is what I'm thinking.
I'm kind of curious about what the plan is 10 years from now. I could even see extending it for 10 years if, over the next 10 years, there was an actual plan to get us to the next 10 years. It seemed like at the moment, they haven't really moved in to them in their new configuration, because they're waiting for this extension. And after this extension, should it go through, that they'll presumably start to actively occupy and really use those buildings, as well as increase their enrollment, you know, up towards that 400 number. And I haven't heard much about what the plan is, you know, going into the 10 years. The situation will be even worse 10 years from now. I'm imagining we'll have older, more dilapidated temporary structures. We'll have increased enrollment, even more demand for people to have space, even more, you know, AI robots, you know, all that sort of stuff, requiring extra space and extracurriculars. And so I am curious, you know, 10 years from now, if we're going to be approving temporary structures into their, you know, 30th year, which is a lot of temporary. So I'm open to approving the temporary thing for 10 years, but I would like to maybe discuss, you know, or hear more about the plans for what's going to happen 10 years from now. Is the plan to have this be temporary and then raise funds, or actually build that structure within the 10 years, and really have this be the last extension? Or are we going to find ourselves in this situation again? And whether or not those buildings are fully up to code, I could imagine them being less safe and less nice, both aesthetically and just functionally, than a permanent building for the kids, the staff, and the neighbors.
So I am less amenable on the temporary buildings, with the line of reasoning being that the reason that we started the CUP was that there had been 10 annual renewals of a TUP, allowing them this master plan, so that they could. If you look at the master plan findings, there are some very clear findings that have to be made, such as the very first one, "Structures shall convey the village theme in their siding, massing scale. Use of open space and architectural character." I think that we can agree that temporary buildings of this nature do not qualify as that. "The structure should be designed to a high level of architectural quality, being a visual asset in the area in which they are located." Temporary buildings simply cannot make that finding. So I'm having a really hard time making the findings for something that we're calling a temporary building that would be there for 10 years. The temporary building was granted as a temporary allowance. It's run its course, and I have a real challenge allowing something that does not comply with the master plan findings that we have to make for an extended amount of time. And so that's the dilemma I find myself in.
Well, we're never going to achieve the master plan if the school doesn't survive. That's been the whole dilemma in the first place. So I'm taking a pragmatic view that we need to allow them survivability at this point. And not to ignore the findings, but that the goal is to see if they'll survive, because we may not make it to 10 years. You know, I agree, if you're at 10 years and they're still using these temporary buildings, and they come back for another 10-year temporary, because the school isn't limping along, those are financial problems that they've had all along. So what's our choice, other than to, if we reject it, then it would just increase their lack of survivability. And we haven't even given them a year on this. So if you want to change the time period, maybe give them three-year reviews or something. I think they need something to give them the ability to survive as a school. Otherwise, we're probably going to be making shutdown of the school, self-fulfilling prophecy. That's all I look at it, in terms of trying to idealistically. I look at the idealistic school, what they designed and what they submitted for the master plan. I agree, this is far from it, but this is all we have, and this is all they have to work with. If you remember the previous meetings, they had trouble even building the funds to develop the sports court alone. There was, I think it was Bob Spears brought up about moving them to a certain here and doing this with landscaping, and that was even problematic. The conditions or the treatment of the asphalt with a certain soundproofing was cost ineffective for them. So I know we've been limped along, but it seems to me we're still at the same impasse. It's not the ideal situation that we, that I envisioned when back we approved their original master plan, when the sports court was on it and the gymnasium was on it. And that's never, you know, that's never showed up. So, and we know it's all about funding, you know, if they had the fundraising plan and had something, I mean, but that's not a part of the condition. It's just a matter of letting this place try and survive as a school. Otherwise, I think it's not going to make it. That's our decision, so, I mean.
No, that's, well, I hear what you're saying.
If you want to modify the number of years, so we, you know, we don't give them a 10-year, and like she says, I agree, a 10-year, then we have 10 more years, and then 30 years later, we've got this limping along, ramshackled, you know, temporary buildings that aren't going to happen. You know, I don't know. I don't want to be a part of putting the death nail, you know, or the nail in the coffin on something that, you know, we barely give them another year to survive as a middle school, which most of us didn't envision. You know, I myself, when my daughter went to her high school, thought it was going to be a robust all-girls high school, and it's changed. COVID changed that. Some of their, I mean, when they turned it into a middle school, I was, we were shocked, frankly. And, but now, we're at a dilemma of letting them just survive as a school, as at least what they want to try and be. And I, for one, would like to try to let them have that. I mean, the villa, the acrimony with the neighbors and everything, I mean, maybe it'd be nice if it was an empty park and nobody had to deal with it, it was a silent. But that's not what's going to happen with this place. Right now, it's a school, and that's what they've been. And I think we should give them every ability to survive as that. They've got interested parents. You know, they need to take the bull by the horns and try and raise funds for this school, and dig them out of what we see now to what they've envisioned for themselves, which I hope they can produce.
I guess I have a hard time with the idea that the decisions that we make are going to be contrary to the master plan findings in order for something to survive. The survivability of the school is not the concern of the Planning Commission. The concern of the Planning Commission is ensuring that the master plan findings are met. That's what our job is. Survivability is not part of our job. I don't want to see them go away.
That's fine.
They've been there a long time, and I'm not saying that I want them to go away. I'm saying that we have very clear findings that we have to make. They've had the buildings for a temporary time. If they can't, if they are having a challenge, to your point, with the financing of even a sports court, then they're never going to get the facility big enough to replace the temporary buildings, and we're just fighting against the temporary buildings that then become permanent buildings, and didn't get handled appropriately against the master plan findings in the beginning, right?
I hear you, yes.
So that's the challenge I'm having. And so maybe what we could do is continue this and have staff work with Alverno on some kind of a timeline, because 10 years, for me, is a non-starter. Obviously, I'm just one vote, but it's a non-starter. That's not a temporary building. You know, in any definition, that's not a temporary building. And so if something's going to be around for 10 years, it's got to fit the master plan findings, at least for me. And so maybe the middle ground here is to have staff work with Alverno on what a realistic timeline is, that still maintains temporary, if we're calling these temporary buildings. Let's get a timeline that is temporary, rather than a decade. And as part of that, can we agendize revisiting some of those other conditions that we discussed?
Yes, so the, if I can just get it clear, so you're continuing the meeting to discuss planning condition number 12, which is the modular buildings, and discuss modifying some of the conditions in the CUP? That's fine.
That would be my proposal, if council's, if commission's amenable to that.
Sure, that's fine. I mean, I'm willing to look at it. I heard disagreement from the other side, so that sounds reasonable.
I think that that's very reasonable, and I think, you know, from my perspective, anything from 10 years on down, as long as there's a plan for it not being temporary, I could be flexible in supporting if the plan seems realistic. Right now, the 10 years with no plan about what's next and potentially funds declining doesn't seem realistic in terms of temporary. So I would definitely support that. I could also imagine, you know, in this world of lots of permanent, but architecturally sound, prefabricated buildings and other things like that, ADUs, other things like that, that there may be kind of cost-effective ways to have something that's intermediate between, you know, the most beautiful, built-to-last kind of thing for their needs. So I'm hoping that with some thought, we could come up with a plan that's realistic to transition them from these temporary buildings to the space that they need. And then hopefully, in the meantime, they're able to, you know, grow the enrollment, and we're all still recovering from COVID. So I can definitely see, like, having some more time in this temporary state to be beneficial for a school and a community that's still in flux from all those world-changing events.
I agree. I think we should, let's revisit, and I'd like to hear why this is going to be temporary. I thought I was going to hear a little bit more of that tonight, and I haven't, so I would love to hear that.
Could we also have Planning Commission discuss which conditions they would like to talk about modifying in the next hearing, so applicant can have?
Yeah, I think that Community Services Department, condition three. It sounds like we need some better definition about, around that. Were there other ones that people wanted to discuss? That's the, Community Services Department number three is the field use?
Yeah, there was.
Sorry to interrupt, but going back to your question, we did find a definition of renting in a different part of the code, but it was consideration, any consideration, monetary consideration for occupation of the space. Just.
Okay.
I remember that when we approved this initially and included the language about the water and leaks, that there was an ongoing leak. Has, I assume that the applicant has worked with the city to stop that initial leak?
Yes, so Alverno conducted a water leak audit and submit that report to our water department, and they have reviewed it, and the leak amount is very minimal. It equals to maybe 0.02 gallon per minute. That was the calculation by our city manager, and then, so it's very hard to trace. But as soon as we found any kind of leak, we would like them to repair it.
Okay.
In a timely manner. So we probably could add that to the condition, if you like.
It's already part of the condition, isn't it?
That was under utility department.
Yeah, any leaks on the property?
Right. And then another condition that the city manager brought up was to replace existing toilet, because currently they have, they identified two toilets that use more than five gallon per flush. And the current standard is 1.2 gallon per flush, according to Cal Green standard. Could add that to the condition.
Yeah, let's consider adding that to the utility department commission conditions.
I believe Commissioner Pevzner mentioned planning condition number eight, the traffic flow.
Did you want to revisit traffic?
Well, yeah, I think we should, if we're going to have them work on the temporary use of the buildings, I think that's the other major sticking point. I think we should have, we should firm that up, so whatever we approve, it sounds more, it can be, it's more reasonable than what we have now, or seem to have now, so that we at least can develop some kind of better flow. It doesn't sound like it's happening now, and it's not spelled out here.
Okay.
So, I mean, that'd be part of working with the school. Listen, you got to come up with something better than what you've got going on now, and, I mean, we'll see if it's amenable, because especially if you're anticipating increased enrollment, the neighborhood's going to want to see that as much as possible, okay? That's the only other thing. That was eight, yeah. That's good for me.
Any other conditions? Any other commissioners wanted to revisit?
No.
All right, then I will look for a motion to continue this.
Chair, would you like to continue to a date certain, or should we ask if Alverno?
I mean, we can ask if they think they will have this ready by a date certain, or if they'd rather it.
I guess our concern is listening to what the commission is asking for. It's rather open-ended. You know, a good example is looking at the traffic patterns and working with staff on traffic. Do we need to do some additional traffic studies? You know, those take time to do and resources. So that's a concern we have in setting it for a date certain. We're not opposed to a date certain if there was more, I guess, certainty in what you're looking for.
Yeah, no, it's a fair point. We're just, in case you wanted a date certain, we would offer that to you, but it sounds like you need more time. How much time do you need? Because we would like to put some kind of a limit as to when we would need to see this back before us.
Well, again, I hate to put a date out there, because if we can't get everything together, then I guess if it's okay with the commission, we'd come back and ask for another 30 days or something like that. But I was thinking probably July. You know, we need to sit with staff and kind of work with them. I think the field use conditions are probably the easiest one to deal with, but I'm a little concerned about traffic. Because from what we observe, and maybe we need to do some videos, and, you know, show the commission kind of what's happening up there, is that I believe a lot of the traffic concerns have really been taken care of. Now, there could be tweaks to the plan that we make. And there may be adjustments to pick up and drop off time, or, you know, moving the kids more internal to the campus, things like that. But it's going to take some time for us to work on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, my major concern was the complaints from the, from the neighborhood, that people are hanging out on, on Mitchell Linda, trying to turn into Highland. You know, traffic backing up all the way down Mitchell Linda. I don't know.
It doesn't, it doesn't back up like it did when the high school was there. It, it really doesn't. So, I mean, part of it is that we're dealing with, in this area, schools that were designed in the 1960s. And kids used to walk to school. And that doesn't happen anymore. The parents basically drop the kids off, pick them up. For the most part, we do have a few kids that do walk to campus. So the, you know, it's every school you drive in this area, in Sierra Madre, Pasadena, throughout the San Gabriel Valley, you'll see parents lined up, especially in the afternoon. My observation is mornings are not a major issue, because the gates open early. And parents, you know, they're going to work or whatever at various times, and they'll drop the kids off. It's more an afternoon situation.
Well, I, I, rather than a formal traffic study, I mean, if that's, if that's necessary, that sounds costly. I was just thinking of getting together with, with the parents' group who have the most concerns and say, well, help, you guys help us solve the problem, because we have a certain number of cars that are going to come here every single day. As, as you have seen, what are your complaints? What would you like us to do? I, I saw some written, you know, comments from people who wrote in on, for public comment, on how to sort of correct the problem. And maybe that could be one bone of contention that could not just help answer this small little section in the, which is a tiny piece, you know, of the approval, but would help if the, if the neighbors were on board with at least the situation. You know, part of the solution, even if it's, even if there's no good answers for everybody.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Why don't you pick a, one of the July? Do you have commission meetings in July, or are you on vacation?
We do, but we only have one. So that'll be July 18th.
Okay, so let's say July 18th.
Okay, so I will look for a motion to.
Okay, that's really close to August 9th, which is 15 months. I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, I mean.
So everybody knows when 15 months is.
Yeah, I know, unless we extend it. I mean, they're already out of those buildings. So they're already prepared for that.
I'll also mention that I'm out for July, meaning that you guys will be free if we have a recuse, so.
Oh, well, actually, and I'm off in June unless they force me to stay.
So it could be an entirely new commissioner?
Yeah, it could be earlier than that, I mean, early June. I'd like to see it before I leave, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested if we could do it, like maybe the last meeting in June instead of July. That could come, and you could come.
What's, what's your meeting in June, the last meeting?
Our, it's the 20th, June 20th.
June 20th? Is that okay? That's okay. We'll do our best.
Could I, may, I don't know if this fits in the deliberation, but just about the point about how kids used to walk. We asked Sierra Madre Elementary, like, when we could let our son walk to school. And they said in fifth grade, which is a long time from now. And I used to walk from, to school at a young age in a community like this. So I'm wondering, you know, maybe using the numbers from La Salle, if 30% of the students are local to Sierra Madre, whether there could be some creative solutions with walking. Maybe it's not the kids walking all alone, but like rotating a day a week, the kids walk kind of together, or having more walking be a part of, of the community. It's a small community for those who do live in it. And it is possible to, to walk more. And that could reduce traffic by, you know, 30% some days.
I would imagine a private school has a much higher percentage of people who.
I was using the estimates from La Salle. La Salle said it was about 30% local, so I was just extrapolating. But you're right, maybe it's.
They were pulling, he cited the other private schools in town, not the public schools.
Yeah.
So private schools have a much higher percentage of out-of-town population.
Even if it's 10%, I guess, that's 10% less cars. Okay, some thoughts, the end.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain of July, or I'm sorry, June 20th?
I will make that motion to continue this to June 20th.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
My apologies for interrupting you, but I wanted to clarify on the TUP.
Next order of business, Municipal Code Text Amendment 24-01, Temporary Use Permits. Does staff have a presentation for us?
Yes, Chair Dennison, Planner Wolf will deliver the presentation for you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Staff has prepared a report and a presentation to introduce the draft amendments to the Temporary Use Permits ordinance that has been prepared by the Temporary Use Permits Subcommittee and reviewed by staff. The agenda report can be digitally accessed by scanning a QR code on the left of the screen here. And to follow along this presentation, you can scan the QR code on the right. I've also left handouts on the back table here in the chambers. Anyone can pick those up at any time and scan those QR codes. There is another code and link in this presentation. So those who are following along on their devices will be able to tap that QR code instead of scanning it again. So Temporary Use Permits, they may authorize use of a property in a manner that is inconsistent with the permanently authorized use of a property. The purpose of regulation is to permit certain temporary uses and define their operational standards to protect the general public welfare. On March 21st, 2024, Planning Commission discussed the Temporary Use Permits and formed a subcommittee to consider, in their proposed amendments, first, the inimpplicability of certain required findings; second, a definition for the term "commercial"; third, whether adverse noise impacts are already addressed by findings or needs to be regulated by reference; fourth, the number of Temporary Use Permits allowed in a residential zone for commercial versus non-commercial purpose; and finally, for public noticing in residential zones for commercial and non-commercial Temporary Use Permits. So in summary, I have listed here all of the amendments made to the Temporary Use Permit by, ordinance by the Temporary Use Permit Subcommittee, as well as amendments to, as a result of staff review. For those following along, they can scan the QR code here. And in, in summary, those amendments basically bifurcate the TUP process while retaining the existing process for the commercial zones. The amendments create commercial and non-commercial event types for residential zones. It would give freedom to homeowners who want to use their property residentially zoned for regional larger events. And it would discourage commercial use in residential zones. And the first of those amendments, and those who are following along on the Attachment C draft amendments, that would be on page three of the PDF. And then for those who have the full agenda report, that's on page 113. And that term added is "commercial use." So it would be the use of property for any fair fee, rate, charge, or other consideration, or directly or indirectly in connection with any business or any other undertaking intended for profit or gain. For the avoidance of doubt, it is not considered a commercial use if there is none of the above remunerations of a commercial use, if there is none of the, I'm sorry, while the property is being used for solicitation on behalf of a validly chartered tax exempt organization, or in other words, a nonprofit organization. So both of these sentences are, are within the definition. Moving on to the next section in amendments, those following along in the Attachment C draft amendments, that's on page 12. And in the full agenda report, that's on page 124. So on 17.88.020, that would be the allowable uses of permits. Under subsection A, it includes the term "commercial use" and indicates its discouragement of any, in any zone which is primarily residential use. Subsections C1 and C4 revise the term calendar year to a 12-month period. The exemptions, the first one for the small events has been eliminated. And the second one has been refined from a number of people, 75 to 49. It would also clarify this includes all persons on site. And the Subcommittee has indicated that the Planning Commission should discuss subsection B2 of frequency, where a Temporary Use Permit is currently allowed to operate four times per year, or within a 12-month period. And the commission may consider whether further limitation is necessary, especially in the context of a now commercial and non-commercial Temporary Use Permit. And then, there is also a scrivenor error found through the Subcommittee's review in subsection C3. Staff has gone into depth to figure out why that might have been. And there's one of two solutions we worked out. On 17.88.030, this is the Temporary Use Permit application. Staff recommended that subsections F and G be amended to increase the time for file, minimum time for filing from 20 to 30 days. This would accommodate adequate time for appeals prior to an event taking place. And then in subsection H, the Subcommittee refined the event monitor requirements for commercial Temporary Use Permits. In the next section, the application, or the action on an application, the Subcommittee recommends that it be modified to require public notice for all commercial Temporary Use Permits. And staff further suggested that noticing be required for, for all non-commercial Temporary Use Permits beyond the first within a 12-month period, essentially making the first non-commercial Temporary Use Permit free from a noticing requirement. In the next section, for findings, this was pretty much completely changed. But by bifurcating the commercial and non-commercial Temporary Use Permits, there were also findings made for each type. But further than that, there was an elimination on the finding regarding to the conflict with the general plan, because that finding could never be made for a Temporary Use Permit based on its sole and intent purpose. And then the first, in, in the original findings now for non-commercial uses, it would add findings regarding a number of permits and undue intensity to a surrounding area. New commercial use findings adds nine findings regarding impact and intensity of use, compatibility with code provisions, reasonable use of land, impediment on reasonable use of land and orderly development, general public welfare, number of TUPs, violations and complaints, parking and noise. And then in B1, which is regarding First Amendment protected speech, we would eliminate the finding regarding the conflict in general plan again, because that finding could not ever be made. Continuing on with that section, the Subcommittee suggested that the Planning Commission discuss, and for non-commercial uses, specifically finding G, that if the other part of the code is amended to further restrict the number of Temporary Use Permits, that this finding would also need to be modified. And then on subsection A2 for commercial use, staff has recommended the Planning Commission discuss whether the language in the findings would ever permit a commercial use by finding in a residential zone. The Planning Commission tonight can approve the resolution, which recommends City Council approve the Kotex amendments for Temporary Use Permits by ordinance. The Planning Commission can approve with modifications, where we would make live edits. Or the Planning Commission can continue the public hearing and providing directions to staff. In one of the first two, if there is approval with modification or straight-up approval, the forecast for first reading to the City Council can next be made in May, on May 28, 2024. Although there is a meeting available on May 14th, the agenda forecast is full. And we don't want to add an already compacted agenda with a heavy topic. Again, I want to mention that staff is not only welcoming public participation, but we're highly encouraging it. Staff maintains a list of individuals who have expressed their interest in receiving emailed notices of public meetings. For anyone who would like to be included, you may email myself at jwolf@sierra madre ca.gov. Information will be added as it comes, becomes available on the city's web, webpage for Temporary Use Permits, which is www.sieramadrecay.gov/tup2024. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. As part of the Subcommittee who drafted it, we did leave open a couple of points that when we get to deliberation, we'll want to review and make some final determinations on. And we've identified a couple of spots in the code that would change based on those, those findings. So look forward to deliberating that. Are there any questions for staff?
Not now.
This is minor, but I was curious why the modification to the definition of "commercial" to include advertising for.
Yes, thank you for the question. That is a staff recommended addition. And that is because we have seen there is advertisement for use of certain property in a commercial capacity.
So, but if it's never acted upon, does, so you're just saying that that'll be a way to prove that they intend to use it commercially rather than having to view the event itself?
That is correct, and it, and it may be enforced upon.
Yeah, it makes it easier to enforce.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, staff. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning this specific item on the agenda. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting.
Debbie Willis, Olive Avenue.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Willis, 83 Olive Avenue. We are the direct neighbors of 89 Olive, who are in business, having events. They have, in, on the internet, they advertise 10 different things that they provide on their properties. They've built structures back there to accommodate this. It's not every weekend, but when it is, it is loud and irritating. And we're a very cohesive neighborhood. I've lived there 30, my husband and I have lived there for 37 years. Everybody else has been there maybe even longer. So this intrusion into our privacy and the noise is not acceptable. And if it's supposed to be temporary, why is it ongoing? That's what I don't understand. Temporary Use Permit means like once or twice, not years and years. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bert Willis, Olive Avenue.
Hello there, I'm Bert Willis. I live at 83 Olive. Thank you for letting me make a comment. You know, Lavender Marketplace is a commercial venture. And just quickly, I just want to say that it really does take the neighbor out of neighborhood. When you bring people in from outside a community that's very tight-knit, it really disrupts the flow of, of the neighborhood. There are days in past that we haven't been able to park on the street. If, you know, you needed to wash your car or whatever, there wouldn't be space for you to do that. And there have been other inconveniences as well. I'd like to see that they don't have any more events. And that's all I have to say. So thank you once again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Maria Decker, East Laurel Avenue.
Hi, I'm Maria Decker. I live at 271 East Laurel Avenue. And I'm a property owner at 70 West Miramonte, also. So I'm just going to go ahead and read kind of what I emailed to you guys. Dear Planning Commission, I appreciate that the city has accepted the task to reevaluate the Temporary Use Permit and Home Occupation Permit ordinances to bring them into, in line with the desired result. I would like to see the Temporary Use Permit restricted to non-commercial uses in the residential zone. I would also like to see the Home Occupation Permit not allow any business operation outside a structure. As a native Sierra Madren, I value our peaceful neighborhood. As a native Sierra Madren, I value our peaceful neighborhoods and strong community. Unfortunately, the last few years, the residents have endured the negative impacts from Lavender Marketplace's outdoor event and workshop business operating in our one residential zone. I have a unique perspective on this situation because my rental property on Miramonte is located on the east side of Lavender Marketplace. Besides receiving complaints from my tenants about the activities on the other side of the fence, my husband and I have seen the impacts ourselves. Recently, the activity has ramped up. I see activity during the week in addition to weekends. The owners of Lavender Marketplace have said that they are limiting to twenty-five people and under. Sounds wonderful, but it has not changed the dynamic. These small gatherings do not blend into the normal activity in the neighborhood. We see extra parked cars. They conduct their activities outdoors, so the noise carries because of the slope of our properties. Our beautiful old neighborhoods are not set up for this type of business. An outdoor event and workshop business should not operate on a residential property surrounded by residential homes. And I'm also concerned that if these ordinances are not revised, we will see similar businesses in other residential sections. And I'm going to, my tenants who actually also emailed you allowed me, are allowing me to speak on their behalf, as long as I give you this disclaimer, which says that they have a philosophy of live and let live, but because of years of dealing with these issues, and they have given them attempts to give the benefit of the doubt, they have come to the conclusion that the owners of Lavender Marketplace are exploiting, excuse me, are exploiting an apparent permitting loophole in order to continue business operations in a disruptive and dismissive manner profiting at the expense of our quality of life. Thank you.
What question? This is a single family home, your rental unit?
It's a multi-family, but it's grandfathered in because it was built in the nineteen twenties. So if that property were to burn in a fire, I would only be allowed to build one home on that property.
Okay, how many, is it, so it's a three bed, how many?
It's, it's two buildings.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Again, we're going to go back to Alverno. With this, I think this is fantastic. With this, will we be able to see the events that are happening in like real time, like what's coming up, what's not going to come up, especially pertaining to Alverno with the filming, with the, all that stuff? Will be able, be able to click in and see it? I would really love to know. As a renter around Alverno, we do not get any notices. And I thought under the new T U P that Alverno was supposed to send out all of that information, and we never get it. They must send it to the property owners. So I would love to see this happen and be able to get real time information as what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. At this time, we'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
I guess I can start since I was on the subcommittee. So I think we realize that there were some loopholes. I don't think that any of us are doubting that. We're here to try and fix that. Subcommittee has started that. I think I may have found a small, another loophole, but that's why we're, I think we're here to discuss. You see basically our first draft with input from city staff.
So I guess as we run through this, we can probably just make changes if there are any to be made as we, as we kind of flip through. So the first thing was the definition. Are we okay with the definition as it was proposed?
Yes, could we potentially have this up on screen while we're talking about?
Absolutely.
It, when I looked at it in staff's presentation, it looked good to me, but.
So then I guess kind of the fundamental questions that need to be answered are whether or not we think that any kind of commercial activity should be happening in the residential zone, and how many events per year we think are appropriate. So. So as far as the commercial use definition goes.
What page is that, Josh? Sorry. Okay, I just wanted, okay, go ahead.
So are there any recommendations for changes of the commercial use definition?
Can I ask for a clarification? In the second sentence, it states, it is not considered a commercial use if there is none of the above remuneration. So if there are no fees being charged while the property is being solicited on behalf of a nonprofit. So does that mean that, well, first, what is the, what does solicitation mean in this definition?
So, yeah. Definitely welcome your input on this, as nobody on the subcommittee is a lawyer. The idea being that we didn't want there to be confusion between an ask or a collection of funds that are going to a nonprofit with any kind of a fee. There shouldn't be a fee to, you know, the beneficial owner of the property or renter or what have you.
You're saying that you.
But it's okay to ask for money on behalf. So a great example would be the wine and whiskey event that just happened. No, no fees were paid, conveyed to the owner of the property, but there was absolutely a solicitation, and there was people paid to attend it.
That's, that's my, I think that's where I'm getting stuck because the, the first part of that second sentence says if there's not, if there's not a fee or advertisement.
Oh, is it double negative thing?
I, I think so. So if, if there was a nonprofit soliciting for.
You had a fundraiser, but you advertised for the fundraiser.
You advertised, or there was a fee to come into the fundraiser.
Then it would contradict the first part.
I know, I think, I think it's the word none, correct? Is that, or am I backwards now?
I think.
If we remove the word none.
Well, let's ask her what she's recommending.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking, if I'm, if I'm right in, in thinking it's okay, in, for your definition, it's okay for a nonprofit to solicit, including to have a fee to come into the fundraiser, to attend the fundraiser, then I recommend, I recommend it is not considered a commercial use if the property is being used for solicitation on behalf of the nonprofit, so striking out that.
None of the above remuneration.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm amenable to that.
Because at the moment, if someone advertised for the whiskey and wine event, it would be illegal under this current definition.
Or at least it would be a commercial use.
It would be a commercial use, yeah.
Great. Did you, oh yeah, okay, it is struck through. Thanks. Okay, perfect. Now that we have a definition that is amenable, it looks like seventeen eighty-eight oh two oh is the next, A is the next insertion. And this gets to the fundamental question of whether or not we want to allow commercial uses in a residential zone. Is this, so.
Could we go back to the one we just did real quick? I just want to make sure there's not a loophole I'm going to ask you. So at the moment, to me, the way it reads, it seems like I could hold a nonprofit fundraiser at my house. And I could also charge for it, and wouldn't be considered commercial, is how it reads to me. I don't think that's the intent.
That is the intent.
Oh, no, I, I.
You cannot personally charge for it.
That's what I'm saying, but I think how it reads here, it seems like I could.
So I think what protects against that is the solicitation on behalf of. So it would have to be an event that is soliciting.
But I could do both that and charge the nonprofit for it. So for example, I could say I'm going to have the whiskey and wine at my house. I'm soliciting on behalf of the nonprofit, and I'm going to charge the whiskey and wine or the nonprofit five thousand dollars for the right to hold it at my beautiful house.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Therefore, I'm making a profit personally from it.
And that was why I excluded the remuneration earlier.
Exactly. So I feel like we don't want to allow that scenario for someone to use this and as long as it's a nonprofit also get personal remuneration for it. I agree that your loophole was also there, but I'm wondering if we could find better language. Maybe it was okay originally because of the for any fair.
But then.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
They wouldn't be able to, for example, charge for entry into the fundraiser.
Yeah, yeah, because that is a fair, yeah.
The door charge for a party?
But wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be profit or gain?
Yeah.
If you're charging, you're profiting from it.
But I mean, she, we've removed the none of the above remunerations. We could say if the property, the property is being used for the solicitation on behalf of a valid chartered tax exempt organization, so long as all the funds go to that tax exempt organization or something like that.
For the, yeah, for the.
But what if the tax exempt organization is raising money for a related cause, for example, and not for itself?
I think that maybe is okay because then you have to.
Also, you could, you could get your, they could write you a check for ten thousand dollars, and then you could donate the check for ten thousand dollars back and get a ten thousand dollar deduction.
That's an extra, that's an IRS loophole, but yeah, that's another loophole. We can always come back to this. I don't want to like rabbit hole on it. But I, I just wanted to make sure that we're not introducing more loopholes while we're trying to close them. And I don't know if it's a huge loophole either. I just could imagine a hypothetical venue pivoting to only hosting events for nonprofits so long as that nonprofit gave them the exact amount of funds that they used to rent their venue for.
Well, so what if we went back to the original language and added payable to the property owner or something like that?
That's what I was originally considering, but I felt like you had some tools on that.
Okay, so if there are none of the above remunerations.
To the property.
To the property owner. So the the profits would go solely to the tax exempted organization.
We can't use profits, right? Because
Right.
Then you just say it's part of the cost.
Question if we allow limited commercial use, which maybe we intend to, like, I don't know, one, two, three, four events a year, something like that. Do we even need this extra line with the whole nonprofits to allow something like this whiskey and wine festival to exist? Not calling them out specifically, something like.
I mean.
Could we strike all of this and still then just allow limited commercial use and then not need this last bit about charities of which you could have a loophole and have thirty charity events a year or something like that?
I mean, there's lots of things, there's lots of things we could do that opens up a bunch of rabbit holes on the way the rest of the code is written.
Yeah, I was just wondering whether our intent was to allow any commercial use or not. If our intent is to allow.
We were just about to debate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
But I'm saying if our intent is to allow some commercial use, then we don't even need this last line. It's extra. If our intent is to allow no commercial use, then we really do need to rabbit hole on this and make sure that we don't end up with a bunch of loopholes with tax exempt organizations, so.
Well, but. Yeah, so you're saying, I guess if I'm hearing you right, you're saying if we're not going to allow any commercial use, then this doesn't matter.
The opposite. If we're not going to allow any commercial use, then.
Then you'd have to, you'd have to put something in here.
You have to get this super right.
Right.
If we are going to allow limited commercial use, then we don't need to get this like.
I don't agree. I think it's the opposite because if you're allowing any commercial use, and it's discouraged, but we're saying it's not commercial use if you're, it's on behalf of a charity. I think what we're trying to do is say if you're a charity, you get one a year, right? And then if it's commercial, you really have to have a high bar in order to get approved. And so delineating that commercial versus non-commercial, I think is where this becomes important.
Well, this is, you have this commercial use if it's on behalf of a charity.
We're saying it's not commercial use.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Not commercial use if it's on behalf of a charity. Anyway, we'll get there. I think we'll.
Maybe we should talk about the general.
Sure.
Yeah.
Come back to it.
Yeah. So then, I mean fundamentally, the question is whether or not we should allow commercial use in the residential zone. And if so, at what frequency? Thoughts?
Yeah. I've been bouncing around that number in my head somehow.
The number of events or the number of commercial events?
Yes, the number of, if someone wants to have a commercial event, if we're going to make the bar high, and then, but we should lower the amount.
So you think that we should continue to allow commercial events in the residential zone?
Yeah, general, well, I was going to make an exception for one bit. But just on the other non-commercial events to also decrease them. Because four seems like a lot.
Yeah, 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 but the number is the question of how often it happens. I'm, I think we need to separate from whether or not fundamentally we're okay with commercial events happening at all in the residential zone.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Because that changes the way the code's written, and we don't even need to consider this definition if we're not going to allow it. And so that, does somebody else have an opinion?
I think we should allow it on a, a commercial use in it. I have a very hard time telling somebody that they, what they can do with what they own. And, but we need to restrict it. We need to make sure. So I mean, I think, you know, yes, but very limited. And if there's any complaints, then it's even more limited. That's my thought. I think frequency would be more to me once a year. I think it would be, I have a big backyard. If, if somebody wants to rent my backyard, and I'm a good neighbor, and I allow them to use it once in a while, which would be a very infrequent thing, I think we should have the right to do that. So I don't like to close it off. That's why I like it. That's why I like it. Well, obviously kind of how it's written, I think it should be restricted and restricted more if there's problems. We give you a chance.
I'm for a limited, highly limited number of commercial events. I think that if it is, you know, very infrequent, we're unlikely to get like neighbors up in arms. Um, you know, at a, on an extended basis, because it's just kind of a one-off and we all deal with a very occasional inconvenience in our life. Um, as long as, you know, everything else is followed, hopefully that will minimize things as well. Um, and I do think that that may simplify things as well, because whether you're for-profit or nonprofit, you can just use the, um, you know, infrequent kind of definition to hold whatever event you're going to hold, the whiskey and wine, one wedding a year or something like that. It kind of covers a lot of the edge cases. Um, with melding, you know, folks wanting to do what they want with their private property, but also kind of the general neighborhood consideration that it is a re- residential zone. So I think for me, it's more about frequency, um, of events versus commercial or non-commercial. Um, or profit or nonprofit. It, it's kind of like, I don't care if your thing is for greenpeace, if it's every weekend. Um, or, you know, I don't care if you're not getting profit or are getting profit if it's once a year or once every two years. The fundamental part of me as a neighbor or you as an event is like consideration for your neighbors um, by having a proper event and by doing these things very infrequently, because it is a residential zone.
Yeah, that's, that's about where I'm at, that's, that's fairly reasonable. What do you think, Tom? I'd like to eliminate it, so it makes it easy.
I think it actually makes it easier to have like a, a number where it's like whatever type of event, you know. It's max one and then it covers all the for-profits or not-for-profits or.
And it eliminates this profitability if you buy a property and you're gonna try to monetize it, which was my concern. That you're gonna say, oh, I can pay three million dollars if I can generate X amount from it.
Doing fundraisers or, you know, weddings or whatever.
There's enough, there's some, there's things that go on in Arcadia that, you know, monetize the entire property over a couple period of time, but, but they're quiet.
Yeah, and I think a couple events or if we limit the number of events, no matter what, you're not gonna be profitable enough to have
Yeah.
Like a business out of that.
I'm kind of with, uh, I, maybe we don't need to call out, because it's causing a little bit of a problem, call out the five oh one or the tax exempt organization if we limit it to like once a year.
Yeah, I guess what I'm challenged by with this is, um, we go to great extents to provide code and zones, right?
Right.
We have zones in every part of the city that are very specific as to what's allowed and what's not allowed, right? And there are mixed-use zones where it's expected that you'll have the added traffic and infringement of commercial activities happening. It is not your expectation when you buy in a residential zone to have commercial activities. And tha- and that's the part I'm, I'm really challenged with. The only reason that I even remotely recommended the, the the one commercial use per year by T U P only and it was discouraged is that I worry there's some border case out there and if we don't allow for it in that fashion, that it'll just completely be prohibited. So I was kinda trying to fut- future-proof the code, but by the same token, I'm I don't think that you have a fundamental right to monetize your property if you're living in a residential zone any more than you're allowed to drive on a sidewalk, cause you have a car and the car is your property. We have areas and expectations that are in these areas, right? So if you live above Village Pizza, your expectation is that because you're in a mixed-use zone, that you're gonna get a lot more traffic and people walking by. If you live in a residential zone, you're not a, you don't have that expectation of commercial activities happening. And so that, that's, that's.
I don't, but if my neighbor throws a party once a year and it's once a year.
And throwing a party is different than a monetized.
But it's kind of the same, it's kind of the same party. If, if I threw a private, um, whiskey and wine type event, you know, at my house, um, it would be the same people as if I'd had the charity throw it. Um, I wouldn't charge for it, obviously, if, if I was doing it personally. But I don't think the, 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 the monetary fee changes the neighbor's perception of, of what we're looking at. So if, you know.
Okay, so then it sounds like the, the majority of the group is for not restricting commercial versus non-commercial and instead limiting the number?
I'm definitely in favor of limiting the number, um, at, at the very least. And then if that limit is low enough, I think we could let go of the, whether it's commercial or non-commercial, in my opinion. Um, if the limit is higher, I think we really do need to be specific, because that incentivizes people to commercialize. Which is not what we wanna do.
Okay, so the second half of what this allows, if we unbifurcate the code, is that you have noticing requirements and noticing requirements cost four hundred dollars.
Oh, wait, wait, why are we unbifurcating the code now?
Cause we were saying that you don't want to recognize the difference between commercial and non-commercial events, that we should limit it by number only.
Oh, no, no, we can still, we can still call them commercial, non-commercial. I'm sorry, uh, if I misspoke. Um, I don't, I just, as, as the neighbor, I, I, I think we should change, I think we should have commercial and non-commercial in the code. Um, and different rules for each, um, how this is put together. Um, but commercial use is a super temporary, maybe once a year. That's what it was, I was thinking.
And my main point with the commercial is I didn't feel the need to like nitpick whether it was on behalf of a nonprofit or, or not. Because I felt like that was all taken care of by limiting the frequency of the event.
Right, and so if it's nonprofit or not, then we don't need the commercial definition. Cause the only thing the commercial, well, so there's two things, right? There's the, the findings. So I guess we could leave it as two separate things, so that there's a higher degree of, of findings. But, um, then the frequency regardless of the type is what we're talking about limiting? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, frequency regardless of the type and then on top of that, to me, I'd consider fundraising on behalf of a nonprofit, also commercial basically, that. And I feel like they can have their events based on us allowing a certain number, which could be one or whatever, a year and still do that.
Can I ask staff a question?
Of course.
Yeah. Do we have many applicants that put in more than one a year? One temporary use permit, um, for just residential use? Like, I mean, that would be shutting like a street party, right? That's a T U P, I think.
So, um, the street party is considered as a, um, special event with community services department. And, um, for the temporary use permit, we do have, um, people ho- hosting their birthday party every year. They'll come to the city for a hundred fifty guests.
Okay.
And that, that happens once a year. And just recently, um, this year, we had three, um, charitable events that happened this year, but, um, it's not usual in the past year.
Same church or from different?
Charitable?
Charitable, charitable, yeah.
Different locations.
Different locations, so I think.
Different organizations.
I think it's questions whether there's any organization or person that is typically requesting more than one a year.
Well, I guess we wouldn't have, if, if we, if we were, if we just cut it all to once a year. Frequency to one more, one time per twelve month period, I'm not worried about the commercial bifurcation, honestly.
So, okay, so the commercial bifurcation, um, goes to.
For that one event, what is the style of event?
No, so what it goes, sorry, yes, but what I'm saying is, uh, if you follow the process through, the commercial bifurcation.
Oh, it still would be.
Would, had to do with noticing as well. We removed the noticing requirement, so the person who has the birthday party would have to notice and pay the city to notice.
That's a good call, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
So that's the other advantage of bifurcating the two is to, is to do the noticing.
Yeah.
So I think we still can bifurcate it, uh, the, the one per year applying to either and then just for that event, whether it's commercial or non-commercial, it will have slightly different, uh, requirements. How you hold the event, whether you have to notice it, you know, that sort of stuff, mostly.
Yeah, and I think that with the, I think that I'm okay with removing the the, uh, nonprofit language out of the definition, because really what I was concerned about was the fees. And the city council already passed a new code that says that up to two hundred percent of your T U P fees will be obviated if you're a five oh one C three.
Okay.
So I think that we can go ahead and remove that language from the definition. We'll keep the, the bifurcation so that the noticing requirements aren't there if you're having a birthday party.
Right.
But.
But if you're, but if it's a charity event, you still have to notice.
Yes, but you wouldn't end up paying the fees, which is really what.
Yeah.
What we, we wanted to avoid.
And the only reason why I wanted to strike that language was, cause it seemed to like be a little complicated with loopholes and all that sort of stuff, so it just makes it simpler.
Yep, so strike all of that. Okay, and so then, uh, as we continue forward, uh, are we okay with continuing to discourage commercial uses or?
That's fine, yeah.
Sure.
Good, yeah.
I, I have a, a recommendation to move that sentence up to purpose. Because, um, we generally like to have more concrete, um,
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Requirements.
That's fine.
That's.
So we're moving the edit in seventeen eighty eight oh two oh up to seventeen eighty eight oh ten?
Yes, yeah.
That's the last sentence. Perfect, okay. So then, uh, the exemptions were all calendar year and we wanted to avoid like somebody having a party on December thirty first and January one. And so we'd gone with a twelve month period, so I just conformed the rest of the code, so that it was all a twelve month period. I assume there's no, no concerns about that, uh, which is what that change is in for. And then as we moved.
I think we need a frequency.
Yes, frequency was the other one that we wanted, so we're, we're gonna drop that down to one, no more than one time per twelve month period, is that what we're?
I like that.
Yeah, that, that was my thought as well. I feel like that seems to capture most of the use cases that we wanna allow here.
Uh, if I may, under this language, we would interpret both or either a non-commercial or commercial use one time per year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. This, you, you're entitled to one T U P per year?
Whether it be commercial or non-commercial. If I may.
One T U P.
Right, if I may make a suggestion, because the birthday party T U Ps will not always fall on that exact date. It'll fall close to the date, but it mi- it might be a few days prior. If we take this code to mean literally, um, they would have to do it on the day or one day after.
We could do thirteen month period.
Eleven.
Eleven months.
Eleventh, yeah.
That's fine, we can do an eleven month period.
Is that a problem for any other part?
All of a sudden, your birthday is two months late every year. It would be bad.
Well, I mean.
I also don't mind if we just say it calendar year and then if someone did thirty first and first, then they're not gonna have a party for a whole nother year, so.
I think we were trying to get rid of that in a lot of stuff, though.
Yeah.
Eleven months is fine to me. Unless there's a way to write twelve plus or minus two weeks, I mean, I don't know, I think it's.
You could have a different frequency for commercial versus non-commercial.
I'm okay with eleven month. Once ever, every so many years, you'll get an extra party.
That's right, every ten ye- every ten years, you're gonna, you're gonna get that advantage.
So you throw a party every time you get a free T U P.
Free flyer card. But I, I feel like that's not like over the course of ten years or whatever.
Yeah, so then I guess we'll, we'll change all of them to be eleven month period, that's what we're saying?
At least that, uh, yeah, I guess that would be eleventh month.
I mean, that was the advantage of the calendar year. I guess we could revert it all to calendar year, that would be the other alternative.
Suggestion in that it keeps it simple.
If we're doing it.
Yeah, I guess.
Typically, your birthday happens with.
Oh, you know what? The director is allowed to refer anything to the planning commission. And so if they were to do one that was a couple weeks apart, I'm certain that city staff would refer it up to the commission to, to hear. How about that?
That's.
So let's do calendar year. And we'll, we'll.
That, that's.
Unconform everything.
The simplest. Cause that's also easier to keep track of, cause you just look at the date it was last issued and.
So that would change to calendar.
Yeah, so if we revert frequency to no more than one per calendar year and then revert C one and C four. Which brings us to the exemptions. Uh, so we removed the.
Really quick, I think there's something in there that I didn't think about. It's commercial and commercial. We are now limiting them to one a year, right?
Yeah, it doesn't matter what.
Do we want them to, do we wanna limit commercial use in a commercial zone to one time a year? Can we only have a Christmas tree lot or do we also want a pumpkin lot?
Isn't.
So that, that brings up a good point, yes. So as we look at the so one of them was based on measure V.
Yeah, we can see right there, uh, any.
That has to do with duration.
Forty-five days, yeah.
Yeah, so then where this would affect.
We could, any property that's within the measure V zone could have four a year. Any property outside of the measure V zone could have one a year.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, I like that.
Uh, that's fine with me. Um, I had originally, my mind was so, uh, keyed in on the residential zone that for me, commercial in a commercial zone is less of an issue in terms of frequency.
Right, and that's, that's, yeah, I, I remembered why that, that, I didn't just change it to one.
I think property is the word that's used more often.
Or any property. Are we parcels or properties?
Yeah, it says property in that same sentence.
Yeah, that, maybe we should fix, I don't know.
Oh, it said, so parcel within measure V and property outside of measure V, is that what they did?
Right. Any parcel within the measure V. Should probably use at least the same wording as the one before.
It uses both in the same sentence.
Yeah. It occurs at the property on a, yeah.
Okay, no, it's all property.
Yeah, let's get rid of the.
Yeah, so on any property outside the Measure V area, the use may occur no more than four times per calendar year.
Do you have any problem with parcel and property?
No.
Okay.
Oh, you, sorry, you, this is, this is outside, yeah, will occur no more than one time per year, per calendar year. For any property inside the Measure V area. Or sorry, within the Measure V area boundary.
Yes, whatever it says up there, yeah.
Will occur no more than four times per calendar year.
And I think we should probably just A and B it just like duration because.
Well, so.
Right?
If the duration is 45 days, so basically you're giving people at four times a year, half a year.
I don't have any problem with the downtown, I mean, it's downtown.
Yes.
Business, where business happens and.
Okay.
If you wanna have, you know, I don't know.
Just wanted to bring it up.
About a carnival, but, um, you know, there, I mean, that's like parking lot sales and things.
Thank you. And might I recommend that city staff
In the.
Uh, conform to either property or
Parcel.
Parcel throughout the code here.
And I think we need to add, just like in 1A, the end, how we've got a semicolon or. So in 1A at the very end, past boundary, we have semicolon or. I think that should be a semicolon or because it's or.
Okay, and so then C1 reverts to calendar year. C4 reverts to calendar year. I don't show any changes to C3. What do you have as a change? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, so in, so in C3, uh, there had been a Scrivener, Scrivener's error, city staff has researched it and unable to tell what was initially meant to be there. You weren't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, what was initially there at one point was proof of authorization by the property owner for use of that property in temporary use. Um, and then there was another requirement, but that was moved further down in currently requirement. But the proof of ownership or authorization of, by the property owner is not part of this ordinance anymore.
Okay, so then we can probably strike that last sentence in addition to meeting the requirements of some section, be one of the section the applicant shall provide because we're not, no longer requiring any of that. So that's just a cleanup from old code. We love finding those.
Right.
All right, so now we are into exemptions, so the idea here was to clean up the exemptions such that they were no longer considered loopholes. And so, uh, small events, gatherings of less than 25 people, we just struck completely. And then we changed the number from 75 down to basically 50 people as a threshold. Are there any objections to those numbers?
Non-commercial, right.
Yes.
So that big birthday party would still need a permit, but if you have your, like my 18 aunts and uncles and all their kids that were.
Right.
As long as it's less than 49 people, does not need.
Forty-nine or less, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and then because that says non-commercial, it means that anytime you have a commercial event.
It will need a T.
It will need a TUP.
For avoidance of doubt, I would recommend incorporating the term "commercial use" in some way here.
Say more about what you mean.
Uh, so the term, the way this reads now is non-commercial gathering, that's not, potentially not the same as a non-commercial or commercial use.
Oh, so change gather.
Non-commercial uses up to 49 people.
Oh, can we put non hyphen commercial use?
It, I think it's just on the word gathering.
I think, I think you're saying, you're suggesting something like private, private gatherings of up to 49 people for non-commercial use would be the exemption.
That could work, yeah.
Yeah, but it should, it should say "commercial use" because that's our definition.
How about not for a commercial use? So we keep commercial use intact.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
That's better, yep.
Great, so the recommendation is private gatherings of up to 49 people inclusive of all per, inclusive of all persons onsite, not for commercial use?
Yes. Sounds good.
And if I'm reading this correctly, this now means that any commercial use, regardless of the size, requires a TUP.
That's right.
I believe that is the intention. Any more comments on any of that? Are we ready to keep going?
I'm ready to keep going.
Yep.
All right, 1788-030F, staff recommended increasing the timing of application across the board for all of these to 30 days. Any objections?
Not at all.
Great.
Is that not time?
The planning commission wanted to consider the public comment received to increase it to 45 days as it was in suggestion, in the language in this. I think it's suggested as language through in the procedure, encouraged to submit 45 days in advance. I think the public comment alluded to making that the requirement.
Oh, um. I, the only, the only thing I see here that would result from that is you getting, the city, the staff getting rushed or make, being nice and making a decision to allow it. Because if, if they, if they'd come in 44 days before the event, I don't think you can approve it, right? I mean, that would be, go against the language. I think it's there, this is there to protect the city staff.
Well.
Right, I mean, for time.
So if it's a commercial event, it's going to need notifications, so.
No, that's a lot more than 30 days.
How long does it take for the notification to happen?
Uh, it can occur within the same day it's approved.
Okay.
Preparation of that might take a couple of hours.
Okay, so it's, it's just, oh, because we're just notifying, we're not waiting for a response.
Because people have the right to appeal. People have the right to appeal.
Right, right, right.
And so I guess if, and how long is the appeals process?
I believe it's 14 business days. I would need to double check that.
Because if it's 14 business days, then you would have to process the application on basically day one so that the mail got delivered in time.
Correct.
And we allow people that time to appeal.
And in case someone did file an appeal on the final day where it would be allowed to appeal.
Yeah, that's.
That processing could just run through where the event would have been applied to.
I'm fine with, at any number, I mean, something reasonable. I don't want 90 days because, you know, you might wanna have a party in a couple of months. I mean, that's, and we're, and we're talking about all of them, we're not separating this, right?
I, um, so your suggestion or what we're talking about here is whether to change that 30 requirement to 45. Right now, it's a suggestion.
Staff is suggesting 30, uh, the public comment received indicates or alludes to that being 45.
I, I mean.
If staff is fine with 30, I'm okay with 30, but that makes it easier.
Thirty days, if we can get notice out, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
If we, if we can get notice out and people have time to make an appeal, we think that'll happen, right, in 30 days? That's my question. I think we extend it to a period of time that somebody has the right to at least get their appeal heard.
Yeah, so it would have to go to 45 because if, if if the, if the appeal time is 15 days.
The more time.
15 business days.
The more time would allow for, uh, more opportunity for anyone to appeal.
I'd like it to be the minimum number of days that staff feels like they can support, and if that's 30, then it's 30, if it's 45, then it's 45. But just whatever staff feels they can support, I don't think we should be more onerous than that. But realistically, I think our feedback is, can you really support 30 given all these other things?
So let me offer a scenario. Someone comes in to apply for a 4th of July event at their, at their home on June 1st. Um, we go through, we process this application and by, let's say, June 14th, we make the decision. Uh, within that time, anyone would have the right to appeal and let's say on June 30th, they file an appeal for an event that's to take place on July 4th, there won't be a planning commission in time to find, to hear the appeal.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Sounds like we need to extend it.
Well, do we need it? So can we, timing of application, can we just make a commercial application longer?
I think that this applies to commercial or non-commercial, so.
Well, we're not sitting on notices to non-commercial.
Non-commercial, you don't get to appeal.
Oh, I see, got it. So like only in the event that you need an appeal does this need to be longer?
Uh, we're looking at the normal appeals, uh, section, which is 1766. Yes, 1766. It's 10-day appeals in the usual appeal, so we could just cite to this section instead of having a separate appeals process.
So are those appeals to the city manager or are those appeals to the city council? Because there's no way that they could
No.
commit to a 10-day city council hearing.
Or commission.
Or is it the director?
I think the time for filing, it says within 10 business days after the commission action.
But there wouldn't be a commission action, right? There'd be a director action? And that's not resolution, that's not for the hearing, that's the timeline that you have to file your appeal.
Yeah, it is to the city council. Sorry about that.
Um, but that's the, that's to file, right? That's not to be heard.
Yes.
And so what we're trying to figure out is the timing to be heard. So what you're saying is that in, in your example, if they file on June 1 and it gets approved on June 15, they have 10 days to file their appeal and then the appeal process starts. So I don't see how we could do this and give a full-length appeal without going over the event unless it's 45 days.
I agree.
So let's change it to 45 as long as staff concurs.
Yeah, that's.
I mean.
It looks like we can take that last sentence out then.
Does, uh, does staff have the ability to accept on a shorter timeline or are you not allowed to because the code says 45 days?
Should be, isn't it? Oh, shall be, sorry.
I, I believe there is a provision in here that would allow for a reduction of that time if the director feels so inclined.
Okay, great.
That's fine with me then, yeah.
So 45 is fine then, in my opinion.
Let's verify that, but yeah.
I, before we get too far down, on F, the last sentence, I don't think we need that anymore.
Unless we wanna say at least 60 days or, you know, like increase it also by 10 or 15 rather.
It.
It's up to staff.
I'm good with getting rid of it.
Yeah.
Get rid of it.
That's fine.
Build that in.
Let's strike that last sentence of F. I think, as written, there should be an event monitor over at the succulent sales farm across the street.
Which is perhaps not the intent, is what you're trying to say.
That is what I'm trying to say.
Temporary.
Because they have a temporary use permit and this does not confine it to outside of the Measure V border.
I think if we just add that in outside.
I think so.
Yeah, 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 they're good, 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 good.
So wait, commercial temporary use permit outside of the Measure V border.
Or meas- measure, or was it border?
It's already.
Whatever it says up.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh.
It says Measure V area boundary.
Oh, okay, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Great.
I was looking forward to having our off-duty police officers be hired to guard the security.
Right.
Okay, so then in C, so if we keep scrolling to 1788-040C, we can strike either, which was an addition, and, or the second or greater non-commercial permit and 12-month period.
Well, if there's only one, you're allowed.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's why we can strike all that.
But we could get rid of the whole or too, right? Because you're not gonna have two.
Right.
Right, of a commercial and then.
So that whole.
That whole addition.
Or the can be.
Yeah, that whole addition can be rejected.
Yeah. Oh, I don't think we need commercial in there either, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, because the, the, 300, yeah, 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 sorry.
Because it's only, you only have to notice for the commercial stuff.
Should we add a Measure V boundary exception to this?
Yeah.
Do they need to note, do they need to notice?
Currently, they notice, right?
Okay.
Got it. If we don't mind that, that we can leave it as is.
I mean, it's an interesting point. Should they be noticing inside the commercial V area? I mean, the.
Yeah.
Well, it does, it is 300 feet, so I mean, the, if we just take that empty lot over there, I mean, a block 300 feet away is like north side of Montecito. It's a residential.
South side of Highland.
Or south side of Highland, maybe, yeah. I mean, that's pretty far up.
So that is correct. The requirement for notice is specifically to residences, so it's not the same exact as other ones which are to property owners. Um, so in, in the case of the commercial and within the Measure V boundary, it will hit some but very few, in a lot of cases, residences.
Oh. So some of it's property owner, some of it's resident.
For, for.
For notification, it says resident.
Only residences.
Oh, okay.
Because the property owner could be different than the residence and so you'd be sending it to the owner and not the person affected. What's that?
I said I wanna send it to the resident.
Yeah, they're going to, yeah.
But, but do we think that that's, continues to be valid to do that?
I think so, because whether it's commercial or not, maybe a resident might have some feedback on the, on the TUP. I hate succulents or I'm allergic or.
Yeah, who knows?
It's good to know their feedback.
Succulent people are having parties at 11 o'clock at night and bugging the neighbors, I don't know.
Yeah, it's helpful to know that feedback, whether or not you're like, it's commercial zone, deal with it, or you're like, oh, thank you, maybe we can mitigate that.
Okay. All right, so now we are on to the findings. So I know that 1G can go away because we've limited. And it looks like 1E can go away as well, doesn't it? Because you're only allowed one.
Yeah.
Correct, 1E, yeah.
Any other comments on section one, non-commercial use findings?
Was the general plan one struck? Maybe we talked about that.
The general plan one was struck because if you're, uh, applying for a T U P, it's because you're going against the general plan, so you would never be able to make that.
Contradictory.
You could, yeah, you literally could not make the finding.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I recall that discussion now.
Anything else, or are we good for commercial now?
I'm reading commercial right there.
And so to help mitigate that, uh, the idea that people have a certain, uh, idea of having a residential use in a residential zone, that was kind of the purpose of putting, uh, A in there. And so, obviously open to feedback if that's too much of a finding.
It seems, I love the lawyerly advice, but a little less objective than some of the other findings, in that, like, what is very low impact or very low increase in intensity?
Seems discouraged, which I like. The discouraged part, I mean, that's fine.
Okay, so what are we saying, strike it?
Oh.
Or you're saying leave it?
No, leave it.
She's, she's saying strike it, you're saying leave it.
I, I'm saying I want lawyerly advice about the fact that it doesn't seem.
Is A objective enough?
Objective enough, to my eyes.
I think.
I think there was, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I think there was a similar finding that I liked better in one of the other codes that were changing, so I'll look at that and.
Get back to us.
Yeah, get back to you.
Okay. F can go away here as well?
If, if you could discuss G as well for objective, more subjective criteria, no, more objective criteria. This, the second sentence in particular.
Yeah, um, so, the reason that we modified these findings is that the recommendation of staff, that they be given the tools to help enforce, on a go-forward basis, things that had happened.
Right.
On a previous basis. So, if removing the second sentence is better, but still allows staff the leverage they need to reject a T U P, then I'm fine with that. Alternately, we could say, I mean, are we going to deny, i- if you, if somebody calls in and, and complains, are we saying that now you don't get another one for twenty-four months?
If they have one complaint or something, it seems.
Right.
What about a verified complaint from code enforcement or police?
I think that we've heard, I mean, it, wha- what would be a verified complaint? A verified complaint would mean that they have proof that somebody called in and complained?
Maybe a, a, maybe a citation from code enforcement.
Code enfor- so the challenge is that code enforcement doesn't work when these parties happen? And so it would be incumbent upon the police department to write a citation, which they're not going to do. So, that's the challenge with that. Did you want to contribute, Planner Wolf?
Yes, uh, I'm reading this now, and, um, I think that previous uses, that phrase is a little bit broad, so that might not, I don't know if it's the intention to narrow this to temporary use permits in the past, or to any use, whether that's a home occupation, uh, some type of exempted gathering, for example, or, or whatever else the case might be.
I think the squishy part that we're trying to get around is, should limit, discourage, or prevent, well, should limit dis- or discourage, right? We could prevent subsequent, which means that you only get one mistake in twenty-four, or we could strike that whole second sentence if city staff feels that the first sentence is enough for, uh, a finding. I, I guess, maybe we strike the second sentence, and if city staff doesn't feel like they have enough, or they want to flag it, that they can, any of these can be referred up to planning, right? So maybe we just strike the second sentence, and this will be a criteria that if staff feels they need to refer it up, they can.
Yes, and typically if, uh, we're not able to make a finding, um, and we would consult with the applicant and say, based on this finding, we cannot make, we would issue a denial. They would have the opportunity to appeal it, or we can go streamline that and say refer to the planning commission for their discretion on the matter.
Okay, so maybe we just strike the second sentence.
I think that's good.
And it'll, it'll match the, um, non-commercial that way, too.
Yep.
For the, um, two A, very low impact or very low increase in intensity, I found the condition that was added to home occupations to be better, um, now I lost it. Oh, the, that the home occupation would not generate any pedestrian or vehicular traffic above that which is normal or reasonable for the district where the home occupation is located. Um, so you can tailor that to the specific use that you're worried about with the, um, under two A. And that will also leave a lot of discretion for staff.
Okay. Well, city staff can, or. Right, so that's fine, why don't you copy and paste that language, and we'll conform it to use instead of home occupation?
Yeah.
So that the temporary use.
No, that's not, wrong language.
Hmm?
So, I wa- I was looking at seventeen eighty-five oh five oh.
Oh, okay, let's see where.
Yeah, so you gotta scroll up, that's oh seven oh.
Um, new, new A.
Now it'd be that the use will not generate any.
Yep, that's great.
That's good, I feel like that's.
The temporary use will not generate, generate.
Yeah.
Yep, great.
Then get rid of the other one.
That's instead of the very.
Oh, wait.
Language.
They're getting really yellow right now.
So I do wonder, I do think, like, a hundred and fifty-person birthday party will generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic above that which is normal for the district.
But it does say.
I feel like we want to approve the once-a-year birthday party, or whatever.
It does say unre- won't unreasonably overload.
But here it says will not generate any, so, okay.
Or reasonable, there's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it says it will not generate any pedestrian above that which is normal.
Or reasonable.
Or reasonable, and it seems like a birthday party will generate pedestrian or vehic-.
Yeah.
But it may be over-normal, but it may still be reasonable.
Right, thirty cars is reasonable.
Because it's a nor, unreasonably overload, so the first condition also must be met.
No, it says or.
Oh, it says nor to me, there's a, there's a little.
Nor, no, well, they can still reasonably overload, you can still reasonably overload street parking, you just can't unreasonably overload street parking.
So, nor means what's happening before can't be true, and what's happening after the nor cannot be true, so the first part.
Maybe we just leave the second clause, just, will, will not, will not generate any pedestrian or vehicular traffic above.
I would think that should be unreasonably.
Right.
Or whatever, yeah.
Well, one's pedestrian vehicular traffic, and the other's parking cars, so they're different.
Right.
Right?
Yes, they are different. So, maybe we can narrow down what exactly the commission is worried about, is it, is it all of those?
Wait, did, it, does it work now that he got rid of the nor?
The nor's still there.
No, the nor, I think it, I don't understand why it doesn't work with nor.
That the temporary use will not generate any pedestrian or vehic- which is normal.
Because a birthday party will generate, uh, the.
Unreasonable?
Yeah.
I think you have to define unreasonable, then.
It has nothing to do with the second part, because it's, it's saying neither of those things can be true, so, right now, a birthday party, I agree, will not unreasonably overload street parking or public parking facilities, I agree with that part, a birthday party will not. But, the nor also means the first part of the sentence can't be the case either, and so, right now, a birthday party will generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic above that which is normal or reasonable.
Yeah.
Which is not, like, we don't want to prohibit the birthday party under the T U P, um.
We could just leave the, that last clause, so the temporary use permit will not unreasonably overload street.
That's what I think should be the case, yeah.
Nor create a nuisance.
So, if you strike most of the first part of the sentence, everything before nor, almost, yeah, that to me.
Parking or per.
Yeah, so if your hundred and fifty-person birthday party does not unreasonably overload street parking or public parking facilities, nor create a nuisance, then it's fine. Like, unreasonably overload would be like, I don't know, like, five blocks, or, you know, something kind of.
Yeah, really, because I mean, if you have a party, everybody's gonna, the street's gonna be full, and it's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, and that's just gonna happen for a party, but unreasonably overload would be like, your fire truck can't get through, or, or something like that, where it's like, this is not okay.
But it's not over. Right. The street's always filled with people that park for the trail all the time, on, on the weekends.
Right.
Yeah.
It seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, but there's parking there, well, I mean, but there's plenty of parking, there's parking there, it's legal.
Right.
But it's, it's not, is it overloading the street? No, everybody else seems to find a place to park.
So I think it's fine, and it's also simpler now, if you agree.
Yeah, I think that.
Okay, looks good.
Especially, drive along.
All right, any other questions about this?
Is H now, um, unnecessary?
Yes, I think so.
I believe it's unnecessary, given the.
Anything else? All right, then I will look for a motion to approve with the edits that we made live.
Do we want to talk about the, the ten-day versus ten days? On the appeal?
Is that for, um, only appeals to city council?
I think that's currently in the code, it's ten days.
But is it only to city council?
Do you guys want to talk on mic, or?
Yeah. So, on the appeal section, the current code to appeal is within ten days after the decision being, um, appealed.
Okay.
The new proposed is fourteen days, I just wanted to make sure that, that's what the commission wants, or do you want to be consistent?
I want to be the same. I want to be consistent.
Where, where did we change it to?
The bottom, C.
C, so you're saying C fourteen, to be consistent, should be ten instead? Co- currently it's ten, so I'm not so sure if.
Well, that's not.
No, no, that, that's not for filing the appeal, that's for hearing the appeal.
Okay.
The filing is ten days, which is the next one, right?
Right. File an appeal, ten days.
You still have to, you still have to file within ten days, that's how long they, you, yeah.
It's just kind of out of order in time, he would first file, then be heard, so that's why it's a little confusing.
Right. Yeah, ten days and ten business days is fourteen.
Should we swap C and D just to make it a little clearer? It's not such a big deal, but normally you think about, like, making the appeal, and then the appeal be- being heard versus hearing the appeal, and then making the appeal. Doesn't matter to me, though.
I'll put the section of A there, okay. Okay, but, but the questions.
All right.
Should we, I approve, I motion, I make a motion to approve, uh, this as live edited, what I need to do.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now, just a couple of more of these. Next up, municipal code text amendment for home occupations. Does city staff have a presentation?
Yes, Planner Wolf will deliver the presentation for you.
Thank you, Manager Lynn, and good evening again, Planning Commission. Staff has prepared the report and presentation to introduce the draft amendments to the home occupations ordinance as prepared by staff. Uh, again, we have more material at the back of the room for where you can scan a QR code on the staff report, and to follow along in the presentation. And this will follow the same format as the prior presentation. So, home occupations may be permitted to conduct limited business or professional activities in residentially zoned areas. A home occupation is by definition incidental and accessory to the primary residential use, and does not generate an adverse impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Existing ordinance has not been substantially updated since it was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. Existing ordinance may allow a home occupation outside of a fully enclosed structure through the discretionary approval process. The existing ordinance does not expressly prohibit any uses. The existing ordinance does not expressly limit the number of home occupations per dwelling unit. On March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the city council discussed home occupations as it relates to uses permissible in the residential zones. The following direction was provided. First, to maintain the existing procedure for home, home occupations proposed outside of a fully enclosed structure, and implement clear and objective standards for them. Second, to allow a home occupation to conduct an event beyond the scope of its normal operation through the temporary use per- permit process, and to create a list of prohibited uses, and I'll go more in depth as we move along in this presentation. Staff reviewed the existing ordinance and determined the following. The term permitted may be better conveyed as ministerial. And by that I mean that the term permitted could be confused with its past tense form rather than its intended adjective form. This could lead individuals into believing that the uses described as permitted are authorized instead by right. It was determined that those conditions, uh, read better as criteria for standards of a ministerial home occupation, uh, that it shall comply with. Um, so therefore, ministerial is being used instead of the term permitted. Uh, and the second, to the second point there, that the conditions under the home occupation permitted are not clearly conveyed. So we asked ourselves, are the conditions under a home occupation permitted conditions for approval of a home occupation, or are they criteria for which a home occupation needs to be permitted, or are they both? And then, under the provisions for the home occupation discretionary, uh, they don't make much temporal sense. And within that section, uh, subsections A and B read more as prerequisites for approval, and not as conditions to comply by, uh, and we thought that they might be better placed under a separate section. Also, procedures for the approval of a discretionary home occupation are not substantive, there are no findings required to be made for such an application or permit. Uh, the permit procedures are compacted with appeals and procedures. The permit procedures are compacted with appeals and procedures. And the provisions could be more clear on the disposition of a home occupation should its associated business license also become inactive. For the proposed amendments, for those following along, on the attachment is the first page where the amendments start, but for those with a full agenda report, it's going to start on page one hundred eighty one. In summary, these amendments bifurcate the standards and conditions, they streamline the ministerial process. The discretionary standards are more flexible. And mirror the ministerial standards. There is overall reorganization of the sections for more temporal clarity. And the amendments make reference to the temporary use permit chapter. It also includes prohibited uses and some general cleanup. For the purpose of comparison with the existing, because there is a lot to look at here, and I'll be honest, that the amendments and the red lines are not very clean. So for the first part of this, in the first two sections, purpose and intent, as well as definition, there's no change. But the first change starts at section seventeen eighty five oh three oh. Where the amended clarification on the disposition of an HOP is associated with its business license becomes inactive, I'll go more in depth later on. Seventeen eighty five oh four oh is refined for streamlining objective standards and bifurcation of the conditions of approval. Seventeen eighty five oh five oh is changed to be more reflective of the ministerial process but allowing for flexibility. Seventeen eighty five oh six oh, the permitted procedures was moved to make way for new sections, the prohibited uses and the burden of proof. And so the now seventeen eighty five oh eight oh, permit procedures, there's refinement in that section and also reorganization. And the current section seventeen eighty five oh seven oh, revocation of permit was also moved to make way for a new section for conditions of approval. And the now seventeen eighty five one hundred, revocation of a permit now includes the ability for modification of a permit should that be appealed. And then we create a new appeals procedure section just to make more organizational and temporal sense. So getting more in depth on this, the first section for amendments is on seventeen eighty five oh three oh. This is where we modify this to read permits and city business license required. We add section B, subsection B, I'm sorry, that adds the home occupation permit will be null and void if its associated business license becomes inactive. So in essence, a home occupation permit is paired with a business license, so these act as kind of one entity, so to say. Subsection C adds that a home occupation may conduct activity beyond the scope of its permitted or authorized use if the authorized use, if authorized under a temporary use permit. And upon review, staff review of the TUP amendments by the subcommittee, staff is further suggesting edits on here. On subsection C, that should be specified that the TUP to be considered is a commercial TUP under a home occupation permit. And then we also want to add the clause that notwithstanding any exemptions, that a TUP is required for the avoidance of doubt. I think that might have been addressed in the prior edits.
Sorry, a question here. So the home occupation permit will be null and void, so as written, does that mean that they'll have to apply for a new home occupation permit because it's now null and void?
Yeah, if the business license lapses for whatever reason, if it's revoked, if it's suspended, or if they just forgot to renew, they would have to apply for a new home occupation permit.
And so as long as they kept the business license going, because there's no time basis for the HUP. They just, once they've been granted it, they get it.
Right, so the the conditions and approval of a home occupation are good as long as the business license is maintained active.
I know, I'm with you, I want to I want to add some time to that, but we'll get to that when we do deliberation.
The next section seventeen eighty five oh four oh, again, we're changing that to ministerial instead of permitted. There's further refinement for the criteria to be read as qualifiers for a ministerial review rather than conditions. In subsection A, we refine this traffic standard to be more objective, thus more strict. So on subsection A, city council gave the direction for more objective standards. So short of any traffic studies or up to technical standards, staff feel that refining the vehicular and pedestrian traffic standard from one that is unclear in its use of language of reasonable or normal for the district to no impact caused at all, objectifies or removes room for discretion and subjectively and subjectivity for the standard. And then this also removes the subjectivity on different interpretations that may arise out of the term district. We can consider alternatives where technical standards can be introduced, such as parking restricted on streets with a curb to curb width less than a certain width. However, when vehicles are legally parked on such streets, code enforcement will have a high difficulty determining the source of the impact. In example, for example, are there, are the legally parked cars on the street there for an event at one location? Or are they there for, are they just parked for residential use? And so that plays into the added standard in this one for vehicular traffic, the added standard for offsite parking, that there be no impact on offsite parking. To that effect, we evaluated the standard on employment, and in the modern age, there's a lot of contract employment going on where that standard would be fuzzy, so instead, we decided that would be better eliminated and replaced with a standard for impact on the parking that we feel that employment would cause, and that's where that standard comes into play. Subsection C refines the standard for use of a garage, it's more streamlined in the sense that we remove any flexibility on where a garage could be used and instead say that only the portions outside of the parking area could be used, and that's really just more clarity to the point. Subsection D clarifies the standard on signage, it's just regarding and including that no signage be placed on the premise. Subsection E refines the standard for adverse impact. Instead of using a laundry list, we simply refer to the code for site nuisances, which is more comprehensive and can be amended. Subsection F adds a limit on number of permits and licenses to one per dwelling unit. Subsection H refines the standard on the size of a home occupation, we create the exception for short term rentals while placing a limit on its occupancy. And then we further reduce the threshold in a ministerial permit from fifty percent to either the greater of twenty five percent the area of a dwelling or four hundred square feet. And then we further clarified this to to be the area calculation of a dwelling unit, because the way it reads now does not, is not really compatible for multifamily properties. Do you have questions on this slide before we move forward?
Nope.
For the next section, on discretionary home occupations, these were also refined to read as criteria to qualify an application for discretionary review. And we also moved permit procedures that were in this section into an appropriate section. Subsections A through H are all criteria reflective of a ministerial review, but allow for more flexibility, and I'll go into that on the next slide here. So so to compare by each topic, a ministerial review cannot have any impact on traffic generation or parking impact. As opposed to a discretionary review, there can be within reason on both the traffic generation and the parking cost. An appearance of a structure must maintain residential in both cases. The use of a garage for a ministerial review cannot be used within any parking area. On a discretionary basis, it may be used in some temporary sense where, for example, workshop tools and furniture could be placed within the parking area provided that, for example, a condition might be placed to allow the, for example, director to do an inspection at their own request at any time to make sure that the garage is still being used as a garage for parking of vehicles and not a full-time workshop. The standards for signage are the same for both ministerial and discretionary, as well as site nuisances created. No signage, no nuisances in either ministerial or discretionary reviews. The number of business licenses is limited to one in a ministerial review, but allows for up to two in a discretionary review, and that's per dwelling unit. Regarding enclosed structures or use within an enclosed structure, ministerial would only only allow within, and discretionary would allow for outside. And then regarding the area of a home occupation, again, as stated, twenty five percent or four hundred square feet the greater, and for discretionary, that's up to fifty percent. And then regarding the short term rental, ministerial is limited to two guests per bedroom and discretionary is up to three guests per bedroom. Any questions before we move on?
Does the short term rental play nicely with the short term rental definitions that are in other places?
The the language uses. There's technical language, and I think it's for transient occupancy of less than thirty day terms.
Okay.
What's up on the slide is just a very abbreviated form.
Yep.
Moving on to the next section, seventeen eighty five dot oh six oh, there's a lot to say here, even though there's not a lot to read. But you can see what staff recommends as prohibited uses, sale and display of narcotic paraphernalia, massage establishments, tobacco retailers, uses related to marijuana and adult businesses unless otherwise preempted by state law. So I want to mention that city council discussed not allowing event hosting businesses with a general definition and accepting events for less than six or six or less people, I'm sorry. And staff feels that other uses may be implicitly prohibited wherever they do not meet the standards. So in that effect, it might be prudent to include a catchall language under prohibited uses to an effect that home occupations that do not meet a ministerial or discretionary standard are prohibited. The next section, the burden of proof, this is basically findings, but we place the burden of proof on those findings on the applicant. So they address the lack of substantive approvals by requiring findings be made that the home occupation is first a reasonable use of land. It does not impede the use or orderly development of land, does not endanger the public health, that it is consistent with the standards of the municipal code. That if it is conducted outside of a fully enclosed structure, that it is not visually detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And finally, that the site maintains onsite parking for employment by individuals not a member of the residing family. Moving on to the permitting procedures, this is simply moved, but it's also refined for organization purposes. Prior, or I'm sorry, existing ordinance would read that appeals processes are in this section, so that's also been moved out into a new section. But within this section, first on B one, it allows the director to refer any discretionary application to the planning commission at their sole discretion. Second part would clarify the required contents on a discretionary application. And the third part maintains that the procedural requirement to notify neighbors prior to a decision, and that's, again, part of reorganization. Moving on to conditions of approval, this section is added as a result of bifurcating the prior section. And then A one adds the requirement to file an affidavit accepting the conditions for the applicant. And A two through nine are are conditions that would mirror the standards applicable to a ministerial review. Section B is added to allow modification or addition of conditions for discretionary home occupation that are reasonable to that discretionary home occupation. And lastly, the moved section, revocation of a permit, would now allow for modification as an alternate to revocation. And then this would also be a cross default provision in which revocation of a home occupation permit also contemplates the revocation of a business license that is associated with the home occupation permit. And finally, the appeal section was added as a result of the reorganization of this section, of the whole chapter, actually. And then B is added to, for procedural clarity, just simply referring to the planning commission referrals and an existing ordinance of seventeen dot sixty six. There are also proposed revisions to the application itself. That's included on attachments E, which is agenda report page one hundred ninety two, and F, which is one hundred ninety four.
Those are all handled ministerially today, right? Those are not part of what?
The applications?
The applications.
They are handled ministerially, but the city council had requested there there be a revision to them.
To the applications themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
So the alternatives for the planning commission tonight are to approve planning commission resolution recommending city council approve the co-text amendments to the home occupation ordinance. Approve the planning commission resolution with modifications, conducting live edits, or continue the hearing providing direction to staff. And again, just to reiterate, the next time that city council would be able to, or the first opportunity, city council would be able to conduct a first reading would be May twenty eighth. Again, you can access updates to the temporary permits as well as related ordinance amendments, which would be home occupation. Ceramandreca.gov slash TUP twenty twenty four.
Any questions for staff?
No.
At this time, we will welcome any comments with regards to this specific agendized item. Hearing done, we will bring it back for deliberation.
Have to go back down. Changes here?
Yeah, so. Were there, so I guess our permits today have a time period on them, and as long as you keep that permit active, your business, I'm sorry, your business license, as long as you keep that business license active, then you're just guaranteed by right this this use, so if anything ever changes, like a CUP, you're just permanently granted this as long as you renew your license.
Could I add that there are new conditions of approval that staff added, so if those are violated, there might be a revocation of the permit?
Seventeen eighty five one hundred talks about conditions for revocation.
And seventeen eighty five oh nine oh are those conditions of approval?
So I guess the question would be whether without like an automatic renewal period you would catch those conditions which would cause revocation, or whether a automatic like kind of renewal period or expiration expiration date would help with catching those conditions that you'd want to revoke the permit for. So at the moment, I think one of the advantages, if things, something comes up for renewal or, you know, being addressed again, then it invites public comment and it brings it top of folks' mind, and it's a place for it to be agendized and other things like that, or, you know, escalated. Whereas if there's no expiration, I could see that. Maybe it might have not qualified again under review, but no one bothers to review it because there's no expiration date.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other, the flip side of that coin is if you buy a house, get this permit, set up your practice, and then all of a sudden, you can't get that.
Renewal.
The the home occupation permit renewed, then you're kind of out of luck, so.
Which would suck.
Yeah, I guess thinking about it that way, the business license would be enough.
I think I'm okay with it as is because there is that revocation kind of conditions and presumably. I think I'm okay with it as is because there is that revocation kind of conditions, and presumably.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be triggered by anything, the revocation or modification don't.
Can happen at any time.
Just determination by the director that something's wrong.
Yeah, it could happen, you know. At any time, it's almost even stronger than, you know, after this is valid for a year, because it could happen the first week if someone violates it.
And then the proof of that is that each year you renew your license, you submit the license for the, to the, to the city.
The business license.
The business license they have on file, correct?
And so there's really no limitations in here as to what a home occupation can be, right? As long as it doesn't affect parking, so if you, so in, like, in the reuse code, it says, it basically says professional organizations like being an accountant, or, you know, something that has a small practice like that, right? And here, it's just any home-based business. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, so the adaptive reuse would be a little bit higher intensity, it would allow for up to, you know, however it's applied, but I think we would reasonably think that that can be a full conversion of the use to commercial.
Okay, whereas this is, hey, I build stuff in my garage.
Correct.
Now I have customers come buy it from me unless they park in my driveway.
It wouldn't attract customers to the site, they might, they would be allowed to sell this online and then ship it out, however they decide to do that.
But I mean, in the case of like someone having like a personal training business out of their garage, that would be one person visiting, I guess.
If you have clients show up, where are they going to park, right?
They have to park in your driveway, is what the, the way this is written.
Is that on the discretionary one also?
But doesn't it, well, because doesn't it say that the, when we get to the parking?
It says no impact or something like that.
Right.
But like, if the street's all clear, is that really an impact if there's an extra person visiting?
So the philosophy in the ministerial process is to really streamline those online-based businesses which are growing in the modern age, we feel.
In, in the ministerial one, you can't have any parking, but I think in the discretionary permit, you can have where it says the, will not generate any pedestrian or vehicular traffic above that, which is reasonable, or reasonable for the district where the home occupation is located, nor unreasonably overload street parking. So you can't unreasonably overload street parking.
That's on the discretionary one?
That's on the discretionary one, yeah.
Yeah, so like, you couldn't ship from your garage in the ministerial one because you'd be creating more traffic.
Because of the, if they picked up shipments.
Is that the intention?
In a streamlined process, yes. It would still be permitted in discretion. I feel a lot of our business, home-based businesses might actually do some level of shipment or delivery to their house. So that would increase the discretionary permits by volume.
How many of these do we currently have in the city?
On discretionary permits, we maybe permit one or two per year. On currently permitted or ministerial home occupations, anywhere between eight and twelve per year.
And how many current home occupation permits would you say there are in the city?
As a wild guess, sixty.
What happens to a existing HUP when, if, if, when these changes go through, when some changes go through? Are they existing non-conforming, or are they held to these new standards?
My understanding is that they would be existing non-conforming grandfathered as long as they're maintained active.
I agree with that assessment.
And today, there's no, there's nothing that ties them to a business license?
There is, it is currently tied to a business.
It is currently tied to a business license, okay. Any thoughts?
I have one question, so anyone that already has a license today would continue to follow whenever they were issued that code that day? So basically, yes, if I got one today, I'd have to follow the code before these changes.
That's right.
Until. The old one, was it tied to a business license? So if it wasn't renewed?
I believe so.
Under current ordinance, well, the ordinance does not specify that a business license must be obtained, this is, this addition is for clarity. But yes, on policy, any home occupation needs a business license to operate.
Okay, so if, if my business license lasted, lapsed last week, and I reapplied today, I mean, would I have to, would I, would I have to reapply for this, or would it just become good again? You're like, not null and void, like?
Yeah, I think I would need to defer to other staff as to whether a terminated, revoked, or suspended, or otherwise permit can, or business license can be renewed.
But after this, it could not?
Doesn't specify that a terminated could not be renewed, I think it's a case-by-case basis as to that.
Well, actually, I asked that question earlier. If it's declared null and void, it's no longer active, and they would have to reapply, is what we were told earlier.
I don't see a reason why you would not be able to reapply after having the permit revoked.
But you would have to reapply?
Yes, yes.
Goes that way too, okay.
There, there might be some instances in which a current business license holder elected to terminate on their renewal notice, and they may have changed their mind at one point or the other, so there might be some need for room for flexibility.
Right.
What, I guess, help me understand an example of a business, a home-based business where they would be doing something out, I guess. Yeah, where a home-based business where they would be performing what they do outside.
Yoga?
Yeah, like that personal trainer example.
Art classes, might do outdoor painting, for example.
And so the discretionary side of this. Rather than saying how many people can be there, it's just saying that you won't overload.
For those businesses that would be outside of an enclosed structure?
Well, I I guess I'm just trying to understand at what point it become, like, is there a, how are we determining the impact of the business?
Based on whether it meets the standards defined in, under ministerial and/or discretionary, whichever applies.
So, yeah, I guess if everybody promised to walk there, and you were a home-based business, we've not increased the traffic, so is there then no limit as to the number of people who can attend?
There is a, in the vehicular traffic section of the discretionary permit, it also includes pedestrian traffic.
Okay. But the same way, but the same way that we talked about the parties, and we gave like a hard number on what the, you know, where it suddenly became a use, it feels like we're, we're leaving kind of a gaping hole, right? Because if you said that you have somebody walk up every fifteen minutes, clearly that's not increasing a ton of pedestrian traffic, but you could have fifty people there in no time. And that could happen daily, right? Like, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, like, if we're leaving this too open-ended as to what kind of activities can be done there. Is that something that become conditions of approval? Like, does the, does staff have the ability to say you can have no more than X concurrent clients at your business? Does this allow for staff to impose conditions?
So yes, if it would generate vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic, a condition may be added appropriately as to limit the number, or however it might be specified by their home occupation, which, which would be found reasonable. So for example, if a home occupation permit says I'll have clients over four times per year, then the condition can be stated to limit, limit it to that.
Under seventeen eighty-five oh-nine-oh B, the, whatever the reviewing, whoever the reviewing authority is, the director or the planning commission can add a condition to the permit. As Josh was saying.
Okay.
So it can kind of be case-by-case, like someone applies and says, I want to host, you know, a dinner party, and you can be like, well, let's make sure it's not twenty-five people every week.
Okay. Other thoughts? Recommended changes to the code?
I guess my biggest thought is around a garage. I personally don't use my garage for parking, so I have like a gym and a workshop and other stuff, I don't use it commercially or anything, it's just like, I don't use it for parking. I have plenty of parking in my driveway, but like, I could imagine if I decided to sell stuff from the workshop or other thing, all of a sudden, I have to like also park my car in there suddenly when I don't, or never have before, kind of seems odd. But I get the intent that you don't want someone like purposely clearing out their garage to start a business and increasing parking on the street itself. For me, I just park in my driveway because I have space there, so.
Yeah, it's like the, but if they converted it to an ADU, the same thing kind of occurs, right?
Yeah.
But even if it's not a commercial business, but you create the same kind of nuisance as you're talking about, but for a business, seems more reasonable not to.
So is, is that what?
I don't mind keeping it there, I just wanted to bring up that to me, like, as a homeowner, if I suddenly wanted to like, you know, have someone over to do yoga in my home gym and charge them fifteen bucks, or like, I don't know, make a widget in my garage and sell the electronic widget or something like that, then all of a sudden, I'm required to park my car in my garage too, even though I never have.
Is that the intention of eighty-five oh-four-oh C?
So if a home occupation would not even be within a garage at all, the, the condition would exist, but only to the scope of the home occupation, so.
So let's use the example of a trainer who works out with people in their garage. Do they have to be able to move everything out and be able to park in there every night? Is that what this?
Right, if, if they're doing, if they're conducting the activity within the parking spaces of that garage, it would be discretionary, and we would place the condition on there that the, the parking thereby be available upon, or on the request by inspection of the director, perhaps.
Or make the determination that there's plenty of driveway to park in.
Yes, and then on the other hand, that condition.
I just thought the table kind of meant that, like, it seemed under discretionary, it still had to be able to be parked in, kind of.
So, so the intention in that code is to maintain the compliance with applicable parking requirements, so certain zones don't require parking within a garage. They might have a garage, but that would be exceeding the requirement.
Maybe I'm just violating the code, and I should have to park in my garage every night.
I don't know anybody that parks in the garage, but, I don't know.
I'm, I'm fine with it as is, I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, in that I do feel like it is common in our community to use our garages for other things.
Park your electric bike.
I, I have an electric bike in my garage, that's the only thing that's parked in there.
Me too.
All right, any other recommend, recommended changes for the code?
No.
Do we like it?
I'm good.
Yeah.
I think staff had some specific sections they wanted to discuss.
Okay.
With planning commission.
Yeah, so I saw that oh-five-oh C, there was a question about the threshold for non-fixed equipment.
So this may be up to sort of technical, but we felt it appropriate.
What, what are you trying to solve for here?
Prevention of permanent workshops or gyms, what have you, in garages. So the limit on fifty pounds is to enable the licensee to remove or make, clear, clear the parking area.
This is under discretionary, right?
Yes.
So this is already going to be left to a decision of the department?
Yeah, under the director's discretionary decision.
So it could be the same kind of thing with one of those multi-gym, with hundreds of pounds that are pulled up, you know, they, they have them for, you know, they.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be allowed in here.
But you could have that on wheels, where it's very easy to move, that weighs two hundred pounds.
But, well, are you saying it's still, but it would still be, would it be a discretionary review, or it'd be absolutely?
It would, it would still constitute discretionary review whilst also limiting the weight of the piece of furniture to fifty pounds.
Oh, so if someone was going to do some kind of personal training, and that was one of their devices, they would never, they wouldn't even get a discretionary permit based on the fact that that thing weighs more than fifty pounds?
Right.
I feel like we're over-complicating this one, to be honest, I think we could strike this whole.
The whole highlighted part.
The whole highlighted part, because enforcement over code, right?
Right.
In, in fact, it doesn't even say, it only says that you can't have anything over fifty pounds. So doesn't mean you'll ever practically move it, it just means that that's a random number that we've chosen, right? So I, and it's under the discretionary, so the director will be reviewing it anyway, and should be able to make a decision off of that. I, I recommend striking this last.
I, I agree.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, because like, your case, if that was the case, and you had tons of parking in your garage, you didn't need it, why would you need to be able to move it?
Well, then you'd have to strike the whole thing, I mean, as this is written, even if you strike the last part, the way that I use my garage, I couldn't have a home occupancy using that garage, which I don't care either way, it's just, that's the way it's written.
So I think that leaving some, some criteria here as, but leaving it in the discretionary side, but giving them some criteria, because if you're in the canyon. and your only, your garage opens onto the street and you're talking about using that, parking's a real thing up there, right? And so having the director have that discretion, I think, is a good tool.
I do happen to be in the canyon, but I have a lot of parking. I'm unique for the canyon.
You're one of three.
I know. I could park an RV at my place. They used to, I guess.
Yeah, no, I mean, so am I. I meant technically so, but, and-
So I think discretion is fine.
Just to clarify, the, the applicant would have to meet this criteria no matter what. So the-
Even under discretionary.
Director.
Right.
E- even under discretionary permit, the director doesn't have discretion to strike this criteria.
To be-
Yeah, like, I'm, I'm okay with not being able to, uh, have a home occupancy in, in my garage. I'm just mentioning that this is like the consequence of this number C. It doesn't matter-
Well, I think we definitely get rid of it then.
And to be further clear, the, the first part of this requirement, that no portion of a garage in conflict with the minimum residential parking requirements, if, if there's use of a garage space and parking area that is in excess of the minimum parking requirements, then that's fine, that's permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, right, so I think if I'm understanding city attorney and you, if they have a long driveway and they can park there, then it doesn't matter about the garage. But in the case that they have no extra parking and they're right, that's their only parking, then it wouldn't be one that we wanted to allow.
That specific example would be applicable to the residential canyon zone where only onsite open-air parking is the requirement, the minimum required parking. Another example is for the single-family residential zone, the minimum required parking is within a covered parking space. And there's almost no, a very, very little R ones that have an excess amount of garage or carport area. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
But back to my example of someone convert, outside of the commercial of this home occupancy, someone converts their garage to J A D U, which is perfectly illegal, and they've taken up their required parking spaces and they're not required to provide parking spaces because they just use them for their J, their A D U, which is permitted by, you know, which overreaches state law, which-
Then you can run your home occupancy out of the A D U and then you're done.
Or something, something like, that's what I'm getting at. It's almost, it takes, I mean, a lot of our parking requirements have been taken away by co- by the A D U process in the first place, so sort of penalizing people with home businesses.
So-
It kind of incentivizes someone to create an A D U out of their garage and that.
Right, as a, as a loophole.
Well, or really hard-to-seek carrot.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I'm not sure that this-
Actually, I mean, we're having a hard time getting to our next arena cycle numbers anyway, so this is a great incentive to convert to a J A D U.
I don't mind that, like, more housing.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the state did it to us, so we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
So whether we wanna push back or not, it seems.
So, I, I mean, I, I recommend we leave C in and just strike that last sentence.
I'm okay with that. I, I didn't wanna bring this up, like, to strike the whole thing. I just wanted to make sure we were on, all on board with like the consequence of that.
Well, I was moving towards striking it all together just because of the, the technicality that we just discussed, but if you wanna leave it in for the home occupancy, I don't know, it just seems like a conflict to me. But I don't know how to get a-
Yeah, so as a point to Assistant City Attorney's, um, comment about this standard now of striking that last sentence would make it the same standard as ministerial review, no, uh, activity within the parking area essentially. So if the commission feels so that there should be flexibility on this, then there would be need for further amendment, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we'd have to get rid of parking or the garage from everything.
I- if you feel that there should be a difference between the discretionary permit review and the ministerial permit review for this-
For garage.
But if you don't, then we, we can leave it.
Yeah, you have to.
I'm good either way. I don't, I don't care about the garage, like-
There has to be, then we have to modify this to say-
Right.
If there's adequate parking elsewhere in some fashion, that, that, that the-
What if we just took all the garage out? Can I have a, I could just have a business in my garage?
No, but I-
We're, we're not supposed to do that? Is that what?
We're trying to discourage that, right?
We're kinda, uh-
But it, but it's for parking. I mean, the reason that we're trying to discourage the garage is for parking.
Increasing parking on the street just to run a business, kind of thing.
But it's okay if it's, if it's your private home and you create, and you build an A D U and you, you accomplish the same thing. I mean, I don't wanna mix the process if we're just talking about home occupation, which is a business, right? And in the motive, motive, in other words, it could happen no matter what we do. But if the motivation is, I'm gonna start a business and that's what I'm gonna do to allow, I, I need that space. Whereas if I was living there, I would never have converted my, my garage to an A D U or something to eliminate the parking.
I'm leaving it just like this.
I, but, but, so if parking is really the solution that we're trying to solve for and parking is already all over this code other places, why don't we just remove the garage part and let the parking be handled by the other seventeen refer- references to no additional traffic, no parking, no-
Right, right.
Yeah, it's like-
So let's just strike, let's just strike the garage from both discretionary and ministerial.
More traffic, then you've failed.
Yeah, so if we just strike C from both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discretionary and ministerial, because it, we're handling the parking issue other places already.
That's what I feel like too.
If you had, you hadn't brought that up, I would have, my, my devious mind wouldn't have gone the dr- I mean, I went one step further after you-
Yeah, yeah, you're like, now I'm creating A D Us.
I didn't think of it.
You found another loophole.
Right, right.
Do you see any issues with that?
No.
Okay, I think that's fine then. That simplifies it all. And goes after the original intent, which is basically that you don't are all of the-
We don't wanna generate-
Cars on the street because someone wanted to create a home business out of the garage.
Another discussion point he had, uh, brought forth were, uh, two city business license issued in connection with a home occupation permit per dwelling unit that no more than two city businesses. So if there's accountants cohabitating or two home-based businesses out of the same, is there a, is it worth delineating the limit of number of home-based businesses?
So now we got two accountants and an eBay business?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, like, why would we wanna limit the number of business licenses to the city?
I, I feel like if it's taken care of by all the parking stuff, you know, like, the intent is you don't wanna in, uh, impact the neighbors or whatever, but wouldn't this ultimately be kind of more tax revenue for the state and other good things?
Specifically business licenses for the city, but yeah, yeah.
Right.
The principle here is that with unlimited number of potential home occupations, that the use waivers from residential to commercial.
Oh, so like you become like a, you know, a grand Cayman address for five hundred businesses?
The business owner doesn't have to live at the house? Or do they? Is that not spelled out?
There's no occupancy requirements.
I missed that, okay.
I don't quite see us becoming like a tax haven.
Well, no, but you bring up an interesting point in that if you're not required, should there be a residency required?
I think there should be a residency requirement.
For this whole home occupation. You could literally just lease out your house to somebody.
That's my home business.
Yeah, the tax-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna lease my home business, my-
The tax refund.
Home office to multiple people.
They were sending the checks to the same address. Took the IRS-
Yeah, you're like a, a mailboxes and more, basically.
Right, I mean, you could kind of make that. And if the post office truck only comes once a day with all the mail for all nineteen of your businesses.
Yeah, so, okay, so let's say we leave it with two city business licenses, but then let's answer the question of whether or not we should be requiring this to be for the primary resident.
I think this should be for the primary resident. I don't really care about the two, it's the-
Yeah, to me, it's not the number.
If they're primary residents.
Maybe if it's the primary resident and they happen to have four businesses, I don't think I care if it doesn't increase the traffic.
Yeah, because they might have one selling car parts, one selling pottery. I, I don't, I don't know the tax implications of having multiple small businesses like that.
So I, I guess-
I don't think it's a problem.
Two, two separate things, right? There's the number of business licenses and then should we be requiring residency at the location that you have this business?
I like residency. And then we have discretion, can we have discretion for number of businesses?
Because I guess the, what, what we could be saying otherwise is that somebody drives into town and uses this space, because there's no requirement that they actually be the person who lives there right now.
About a dentist, a dentist probably doesn't live at the place. Are dentists covered under this?
If he's using his, how, the house as a dentist?
Yeah, as a dentist's practice.
I think that would have to be-
Is that commercial or not?
Yeah.
Cause that, there was like, Dr. Chalito was in town for a little bit, and that was basically a house.
I, I can answer the question.
Yeah.
Um, specifically, Dr. Chalito's former dentist's practice, uh, it was within the residential entrepreneur overlay, which did allow for conversion of entire residences, one hundred percent of them, into such practices like that. When we're talking about home occupation, we're talking about outside the scope of a residential entrepreneur overlay. Uh, for the example of a dentist's office or practice within the home occupation that potentially could be allowed on the discretionary basis uh, with a limit of fifty percent the area of the dwelling unit.
But also, we'd have to consider that people are coming. There'd be too much traffic that wouldn't get allowed from discretionary.
That's correct, and most potentially, I, I feel that, that there would be a high bar to meet to maintain the residential character.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the-
In that case, I think requiring occupancy makes sense. To me, at least.
And the fifty percent is total, right? So if I have five home businesses, the five home businesses can't take up total more than fifty percent?
That's a good point. That hasn't been considered.
I'm just getting back to that.
Then, cause, because if you, the way as written, if it's two people up to fifty percent, then a hundred percent of the house could be business.
That, that can be another way of regulating the number of businesses, is that additively, the number of businesses do not exceed the thresholds for area.
Yes. So residency and-
Total business occupancy.
So where do you recommend we, we add those, Deputy City Attorney?
We could add a residency requirement to seventeen eighty-five oh three oh. Oh, sorry, that's specific to business license required. Um, we could add it to definition, actually. Oh two oh.
Oh, it says by the inhabitants.
Inhabitants of said property.
Are those the residents?
Let's make sure that you think this is no loophole, inhabitants.
See if there's a definition in here.
Cause they, they inhabit it.
Rent a whole house and then live in the house and have a home business? I think that's also okay. You know, do I have to like be on the mortgage if I'm-
No, I, I think we're saying inha- I, I think inhabitant's the right word.
I think inhabitant's, as long as you're living there, basically. It doesn't matter if you're on the mortgage or not. If you're living there, it's your house and you have a business out of your house.
But that eliminates the-
Yeah.
I agree, inhabitant's works. There's no definition, but it's the person who lives there.
Okay, and so then we just need to add, uh, aggregate of fifty percent.
I would like to strike the limit on the number personally, but-
I don't think there's much difference if two people have two businesses.
How about we add, how about we make it discretionary if it's a second permit for the same location? For the same dwelling unit?
Yeah, because you can get one without it.
Well, how it currently reads, it seems to me like it was maxed to, whereas I think what we wanna say is like, anything more than one. I don't really-
That's, well, that's in the ministerial there. That's fine, because that's like a shortcut.
And then under the discretionary.
And if we go down.
See, it says no more than two rather than-
Gotcha, okay, yeah. So then just-
I think we just take that out.
Yeah, just strike F.
Unless you wanna put like a, a, just in ca- I, I think we're covered.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna, yeah.
If it starts becoming too, too much.
Oh, if it's discretion, okay, yeah, we're good.
And there's also the space limitation of the-
A fifty percent total.
We want to strike F just from the discretionary, so it-
Yes.
Yes. And where's the size or the, the square footage listed?
Fifty percent, it's highlighted right now. H.
Oh, we got a garage again.
Excluding the garage. That's fine, that's the way we calculate it.
Oh, that's, that's, that's-
FAR, so, that's, that's just consistent with our FAR code, right?
Yeah.
So it, it'll be specific now just to the dwelling unit or any other area, which might be an accessory dwelling or accessory structure, not a dwelling unit, uh, in connection with the said dwelling unit. So this maintains the, the, on the R one properties that don't have more than one dwelling unit, that all area that is not a garage uh, is eligible as, as that area calculation. But within a multifamily apartment building, it's limited just to the dwelling unit.
Okay, I think maybe, can we say home will be occupied, no more than fifty percent will be occupied for the home occupation or, or total home occupations? Or something?
Just to make it clear that-
To make it fifty percent total?
Of all summed.
Yeah, because if you have two, you could put fifty percent in each. Technically, I guess.
Or you could say aggregate.
Oh, I meant it, oh, okay, that's fine.
Aggregate home occup-
I was looking downward, home occupation is in quotes, but- That's kind of redundant there, isn't it, that sentence?
I think.
For the home occupations or home occupations will occur, will be occupied for the home occupation. I guess you kinda gotta put something though.
I think that makes sense, home occupation or home occupations.
I just wonder if the last home occupation needs a or home occupations? Or whether we could say this all more simply.
There's gotta be a simpler way to say this.
That nor, no, not more than aggregate fifty percent of the total four area of all structures.
Could be used for the busi- used for the home occupation.
The-
The home occupation.
Home occupation.
Business.
S in parentheses or something. Anyway, as long as it's logical, it doesn't have to be the most beautiful English.
Okay. Any other points that you wanted feedback from the commission on?
Did you get that, Josh? They still work?
We'll massage this.
Okay.
Uh, we're getting some more points. Prohibited uses. Prohibited uses.
I have chat G P T up for this and be like just re-record this in code.
So you wanted to add into prohibited uses?
Uh, as directed by city council, the, um, basically event centers, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
And then the catch-all languages, as mentioned earlier.
So do we want to edit that in right now then?
Yeah, I, I mean, event center, I, I think what they were trying to. Do you want to give us feedback as to what they were? Specifically trying to capture?
The feedback is to prohibit. Events or home occupations that would be events in drawing basically traffic or, uh. A use out of character with its neighborhood, essentially.
So, so do we think that we have sufficiently covered the traffic side of that? It feels like we've been. Very prescriptive on that.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, because event, event center is so.
Okay, so then we just need to add, uh.
Catch-all.
Catch-all.
The catch-all, yes.
Let's consider that we, yeah.
Do we need a catch-all if the permits will only be? Will only be issued if they can go through the ministerial or discretionary criteria? Does, does that make sense?
I mean, I always love a good catch-all.
Okay.
Well, because it's, you're right, because it spells it out, it gives you the discretion to.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because I feel like. Yeah.
All right.
Yep, does, does that look good? Any use is not consistent with the standards of this chapter? I mean, I get what you're saying that ministerially, I feel like. You could skirt the ministerial and still somehow not really be complying with the spirit and so. I think that should help.
Yeah, I, there's no, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Is it a period though?
Yeah, I was thinking that, but it's late.
There we go.
All right.
Yeah, they know.
And. Right?
No, they're, they're prohibited uses, so any of them could be it.
Oh, Lord, yeah, it's okay, it's late.
All right, any other feedback you wanted from us on this particular item? While he's scrolling.
I don't believe so.
Great, I will look for a motion to approve this text amendment as edited.
Motion to approve this text amendment as edited.
Second.
Are those in favor?
All right.
All right, is this last one super fast?
I think it's.
It's, it's about three lines of amendment.
All right.
And I, I, if the commission so wishes, I can skip a PowerPoint presentation.
The commission so wishes.
Oh, the last one, oh, yeah.
I move to approve.
Did you guys discuss this? This is part of your subcommittee as well?
No.
No. I was.
At the same city council meeting on March twenty-sixth, the city council also brought into their discussion the adaptive reuse and historic landmarks and made mention of. Uh, the fact that. All the benefits afforded to historic landmarks and. Felt that the way the code currently reads, allowing a adaptive reuse for change of use in a commercial sense of a residential property. And a Mills Act contract is too additive a burden for the city to bear on the general wel- welfare. So they directed staff to modify this requirement or this provision to instead of allowing for both Mills Act contract and a change of use. To instead allow either or. And that's what this amendment does. Uh, staff had also brought to the attention of city council, uh, in the section below, there's a term used here. Small residential or small entrepreneurial business, that's under section seventeen eighty-two oh six five. Uh, staff had felt that that was too vague and, uh, brought that up with the city council and said that there could be more expressed terms. They, they did not quite feel the same way and said that because this is a discretionary process through the conditional use permit, that the flexibility should still be there. But should the planning commission feel that, uh, more express examples of small entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial business would help? Uh, they may propose some amendments to that language.
I, I think that, uh. Okay, sorry, we're not in deliberation yet, uh, I did have a question. Do we need to add any language in here? So, actually, let me take a step back, is there anybody who currently is taking advantage of both of these?
No, but there has been applications for that, that have.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Great, so nobody is doing it today, so we don't have to worry about catching it at a renewal of the Mills Act agreement. For an amendment.
That's correct.
Is what I'm hearing, okay. Any other questions for staff?
No.
At this time, we will invite anybody to come forward and speak to us. Seeing none, we'll bring it back for deliberation. Any comments?
No, this looks fine to me.
Yeah, seems reasonable.
Yep.
Yep, closes a great loophole. All right, so I will look for. A motion to approve. Uh, municipal code text amendment twenty-four dash zero-three historic preservation.
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Anybody have any planning commission reports? Nope, great.
Wait, 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 what's the next meeting?
The next meeting is May second.
All right, we'll see. I think the next one I might. I'll save that for the next meeting, man.
Okay. So the next meeting at May second would, we will review a design review permit for a new replacement, single-family home. And also I just want to let the commissioner know that on April twenty-fifth. Community Services Commission is scheduling a public meeting to review the Meadows Park. And the commission will provide the developer with directions for what type of activities for this park. That meeting starts at six P M. on April twenty-fifth. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, has the, um, appeal by Alverno of the planning commission's decision been agendized to council yet?
Yes, so that, um, meeting is agendized on May twenty-eighth, but, um. Our city attorney is, um, still. Looking to maybe change that date with Alverno, so I, I don't have an exact date yet.
Okay.
Uh, could you clarify, is the twenty-fifth, which is next week, a planning, a special planning commission meeting or it's another meeting?
It's a special community services commission meeting.
So we aren't necessarily expected at that meeting, you're just letting us know about it?
Correct, because planning commission actually directed that item, the park design.
That would take.
And take that to the community services decision, um, commission for their advisement under like what kind, what type of park it should be.
Understood.
Any council liaison report? No, perfect. Hearing nothing else, I'll adjourn the meeting. To the May second meeting. Thank you.